The session for the Dayton City Council and Planning Commission for five-four regarding land use.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Planning Commission and council members for being here tonight. We have Kevin Shea with Landform. I know that Jason Quisberg with StanTech will be here joining us in a little bit. I think he's on a call. So what we're here to do is to talk about land use. I did print some maps out which are in front of you. You can mostly take them along with some definitions of what those are. We're going to talk about land use, figure out what we want to do with land use now and in the future, what have you. We've heard some discussions about talking about the comp plan with transportation stuff and knowing that there needs to be amendments made into the comp plan related to transportation. So we are here to take any comments and feedback. This is mainly a work session for the Planning Commission and the council, be able to get on the same page with these things. As you go through the process, you will have Planning Commission and council involved in most of these proceedings. So city staff is here to take direction and help with any questions you may have. Otherwise, I know Kevin had presented or provided a short presentation tonight just to kind of give some background. And we'll hand it off to Kevin.
Exactly. Yeah, so this is the work session for our land use discussions. I'm just going to kind of give, it's a very brief presentation, just kind of the background of what a comp plan is, why we have it, what are the rules we have to follow when we adopt it, that kind of thing. So the Metropolitan Land Planning Act, which has been around since 1976, is kind of the guideline that is set forth in state statute for why cities in the seven county metro area have to adopt a comprehensive plan. They're required to be adopted or amended every 10 years. So the cycle has been 2008, 2018, 2028. It's the next one coming up. Metropolitan Council is the entity that reviews those comprehensive plans and any future amendments to them. The land use chapter is kind of the framework. It's kind of one of the first pieces you kind of figure out because it does inform the other chapters. You don't know transportation, economic development, housing, those all come after land use because once you set out that land use plan, then you kind of complete those other chapters. The rule that we always have to hit is whenever the Met Council is providing sewer and water, you always have to hit three units an acre for net density, citywide total. So when you're averaging low density, medium density, high density, you have to hit that three units an acre. And that's required for every community within the seven county metro. Updating the land use plan citywide, so if we do, you know, in discussions tonight, and I only bring this up just for informing you of, you know, budget isn't a factor when you're updating it because it takes staff time and potentially consultant time and things like that. Updating the land use plan would have a kind of a trickle down effect in what other pieces that it would affect. So we have a sewer and water plan that's currently in process. That's been put on hold until we decide if we're going to do the land use changes because that will change. So if we move around high density, medium density residential, or we move around commercial or industrial, that's going to change how the sewer and water are laid out for the city. So this is going to be an update, depending on how many land use changes we decide on. This could be an update similar to what was done in 2018 through 2022. And this update would not, I checked, double checked and then triple checked this with Met Council. This update would not satisfy the requirement to do another update in 2028. Just so you know, there would be a still an update required as part of that, based on the forecast that will come out in 2025 from Metropolitan Council for all the metro areas.
Kevin, one quick point of clarification. You said 2018 to 2022. I know I was on here personally, but I know I was on the Planning Commission since 2020 and nothing was done with the comp plan other than waiting to get approvals and stuff. So I don't know if someone has some experience. How much time did it actually take just to do the land use portion?
I do not know because I was Tina and Alec that did that. So I wasn't a part of the involvement for it. I can tell you.
It wasn't very long.
It wasn't?
No, I guess the bulk of the work was, bulk of the work was a couple of months, but they already had the answers. So, I mean, it was just kind of a, the council just kind of.
Yeah, five years seemed really intimidating. I just wanted to put it.
Yeah, that, I only said that because that's how long it took during the last comp plan update. Different cities processed them at different paces. So I worked on four during the last round in 2018.
A big part of that time though wasn't, I mean, nothing was really happening. We got the plan back. It needed something updated or amended.
Was totally out of our hands for, yeah.
Covid was in there, was part of it.
And then, and then we kind of sat on it for a year.
Right. And there is, I mean, when you adopt a full update, the Metropolitan Council has a lengthy review process. And there was a lot of back and forth for most communities on that where you'd submit, they'd take four months on review. You'd get comments back. You take three to four weeks maybe to address them, and then they have another four month review on those. So it just, the process was not quick by any means. And I only said that because that's the range I saw for the comp plan. It, most of the work likely pertained to probably only about a one-year timeframe of going through each of the plans. But then there was probably a year and a half worth of approvals and back and forth with the Met Council. So just to keep in mind that. This is new from the staff report. So I had not spoken to Met Council before this, the staff report went out. I spoke with the sector rep Freya on Monday about the possibility for rural residential because I know that's been brought up quite a number of times specifically to comparing it to Ramsey because Ramsey is a very comparable community in terms of classification. They're, Dayton and Ramsey are both emerging suburban edge communities, basically on the edge of the Twin Cities metro area. So looking at what possibilities may exist there. Ramsey is different from Dayton in that Met Council doesn't plan to provide sewer and water. Even in their long-term 2050 plan, they don't provide, they don't plan to provide sewer and water to date, to Ramsey for the entire city. It cuts off about halfway up the city and I'll have a map on the next slide. So that's the key difference because Dayton, they plan to sewer and water the entire city through their ultimate plan. So we are required to essentially have sewer and water for new urban development, whereas Ramsey is not in the ultimate goal. So they can have some different density, rural density requirements. So they have like a one per two and a half allowance in their code and through their comp plan. We would not be allowed that. And the Freya was very clear that that's not even an option to go to that low. We can stick to the one per 10, which is the standard flexible residential development guidelines that the Met Council allows in the interim before sewer and water gets there. We don't currently have an option to do that in the city code. So we would have to adopt something if that's a goal to either do a one per 10, which are, I refer to them as the stovepipe lots, you know, take a 40 acre, you drive four 10 acre lots in, or you can do a cluster ordinance and allow clustering of that same four per 40, but then the four units are clustered on say, one acre lots and you leave the other 36 acres open for development when sewer and water gets there, something along those lines.
So how, so about two and a half years ago, I talked to one of the planners down in Ornol and they were doing two acre lots on sewer. How would Ornol be able to?
I'd have to look at their specific case because it all depends on whether Met Council is planning the sewer, the entire community, what designations they have.
So even in areas where we have wetlands that we just can't get to, they're saying no?
Yeah. So.
Are they saying that specifically no? I mean, I get it if you had a 50 acre field and we wanted to do two and a half acre lots. I could see them saying no. But if we had a 10 acre area like Dennis was referring, that with topography and wetlands, I think that they would just turn and say no. I mean, granted, if it was only 10 acres in the whole city, it's not the end. That's kind of what we talked about earlier, the planning commissions.
Yeah.
Very, being very focused on site specific that don't even set up well for development in general.
We do have one classification in the land use plan currently that's called sewered rural residential. And it's, allows two and a half acre lots on a total of 160 net acres for the citywide. Nothing is currently guided that and anything that would come in would have to be a comp plan amendment to guide it to that district. And it would be judged by the Met Council on a lot by lot basis, but that requires sewer. So it's still sewer and water. So that's, the difficulty is that in, if you wanted to do it in the 2050 area, you can't get sewer and water there. So it doesn't really, I mean, you can't do that development anyways. But if you wanted to do it in an area that's currently sewer, you have that option to say, my lot has 30 acres and 18 of its wetlands. So we're going to have to work around this and we're not going to get the three units an acre that would be typical of a urban development. So we're going to pursue this alternative, larger lot, but still urban, meaning sewer and water. So we do have that option currently in there. No one has utilized it to date. So it doesn't even show up on the land use plan. And any parcel that came in would have to be a, on a case by case basis.
But it's still going to be sewered.
Yeah, there's no, Met Council is very adamant that we, anything less than one per 10 has to have sewer and water.
And because it's sewered, it would still go against our calculations then, right?
Correct. Yep. So we have to offset it by upzone or guiding something higher density, going from a low to a medium or a medium to a high somewhere else. Because our, our plan currently, and I haven't, I didn't look at this to see exactly how close to 3.0 it is, but we have to maintain above that 3.0. So if, by saying, taking a medium density parcel and doing the sewered rural residential classification, you'd have to essentially get that many more units on some other site, whether it goes from low to medium or medium to high. It's all a balance of hitting 3.0 for the city as a whole. So.
We haven't got there yet, but residential estate is different, correct?
Yeah, there's existing zoning districts that don't have to comply with three units an acre. So like the residential estate district on the river, the, any of the existing residential, like the R1 or R2 existing unsuared residential, those don't have to comply with sewer unless they redeveloped. So they can continue with septic and well. They just can't develop further with septic and well.
How many units per acre do we end the last comp plan at?
How many?
Units per acre. It was right or just above three.
Yeah, it has to be above three.
So it wasn't like four or five?
Okay.
Nobody has a lot of problems with that. We'll talk about it later.
Yeah, nobody hits anything more than about 3.1 or 3.1. Nobody shoots that much higher because usually you're trying to come in right around it, except for, once you move closer to Minneapolis and St. Paul, then you start getting like suburban communities have to have five units an acre. And then you get in Minneapolis, St. Paul, theirs has to balance at like 10 to 15 units an acre. So just, that's different. But for three, all the complans I worked on, even in other communities, were all, they either hit 3.01 to like 3.2. They weren't, they didn't really exceed much more than that.
But isn't that true that if we look at where we are today, we've put in a lot, the newer developments have all been tighter than, you know, I mean, higher than 3.0.
Yeah, some of them, not all, some.
Riverwalk wasn't.
Most of, I think most of them were 2.0.
I just did the plat monitoring data, which is.
Well, sure. So every house, we're picking up a quarter of a.
No, we're losing.
We're losing.
We're losing.
On that side of it. Right. Okay. So my point is, we're able to bank properties where we've, this is an ongoing rolling average, right? That we have to maintain over some time period, not week to week.
Oh, year to year. Full development, over the full development in the community.
It's at full buildout. It has to be.
So of the city.
Of the state.
Yeah.
There's no.
Like check-in.
Could be 20, 15 or 16.
The check-in is every 10 years. The check-in is every 10 years when you do your comp plan because you look at your existing uses and then you look at your land and that's the check-in.
Yeah, we do an existing density calculation when you're doing your comp plan, like where are we at currently? So when we do the update in 2028, that'll show us between 2018 and 2028, how'd we do? Like, did we go from?
But we don't have to hit the 3.0 as I remarked or thought. It has to be 3.0 citywide.
No, but each development is supposed to come above 3.0, but as long as, like, so the way they check in, they're supposed to.
Not each development.
Yeah. Unless you grant flexibility from it. But the goal is that each year when you do a check-in, you have a 20, so you do a plat monitoring program, which is every year we submit a density for the year's worth of subdivisions. So I just submitted that to Met Council for the 2022 subdivisions that received final plat approval. And there was, I think it was Riverwalk came in under, but all the other ones like Iona Gardens, third, I forget the, all the other subdivisions, seventh and eighth for another one, they all came in above 3.0. So our overall for the year was like 3.6 or 3.5 or something like that total. And so that's kind of their way to see, how are you doing on a year by year basis?
I guess what I'm trying to get clear on is, so we, there's our, there's our number today or sometime recently. And we put in an apartment building or condo complex that's going to be 12. Aren't we then banking?
You're jumping up, yes.
Yeah, jumping up overall.
So that there's a possibility for, besides all the other hurdles, but to have larger lots in some other development as it comes in.
Yeah, because I mean, low density could go down to, I think it's two. There, the range is two to five. So you can go below three for low density, but then your medium and your high is pulling it above that three average by having that development come in. But there is no, like, they don't have an, like an enforcement officer that comes out and says, you're not meeting your density as of right now. That's not a check-in that Met Council does on that.
So, so what do they expect us to do with areas that don't make sense to sewer?
I think that's kind of why that classification for this, for the sewered residential, the large lot was like the compromise. I mean, it, it doesn't make sense to sewer it from a urban perspective, you know, smaller lot sizes. But the Met Council still wants to sewer all of Dayton. So they said, you can still have the larger lots here even though it won't potentially meet the, the units per acre that you're supposed to hit. But the, they're planning to sewer all of Dayton and so we have, they're requiring us to plan for that.
Those areas just don't develop until the plan costs is.
There, there are always areas where you, you're not going to get sewer through to. So, I mean, all of, I mean, this whole area would be just a kind of a nightmare to get sewer through with all these wetlands unless you, I don't know, something wouldn't seem right there.
The other, the other question I have is, how much is, in the past, and maybe you don't know, but how much does that three change from two? You know what I'm saying?
Going from, you know, existing, like the whole community would be at 2.0.
2.8 or 2.6. Because that's my fear with banking is, is that we're going to get to a point where we're banking to, to let the rest be and then they're going to change it. And that's, that's one of my fears.
Well, the, also just, they're not going to let the rest be. Like, if you are already over your 3.0 there's, and your comp plan is drafted a certain way, I mean, you're going to have to amend it anyways to say, I don't want to.
Aren't you saying like, we might get to four because we get a larger, like a apartment? And all of a sudden they just raise it to four and now we're stuck there.
Now we're stuck.
Because we overbanked it.
Yeah, we overbanked.
And if we go too much medium or high density too early where we do end up over the top and they start looking at it year by year later on down the road, they may just forget that we're banked or just not care that we're banked. And all of a sudden they kind of raise the standard up. So.
That's my concern with banking.
You've been trending here, so we should see your results here.
Right. I mean, that just, that means just we have to be more careful about how we open those certain areas in relation to opening different densities at the same time if we're going to try and scale that way to avoid running into a collision of having to scale too heavy later or too heavy too early and then have to maintain later.
Yeah, and density will always be higher than what we calculate in the comp plan because when we do, low density is two to five units an acre. When we do the calculations, we assume everything comes in at the lowest possible to show what the lowest threshold would be. And no development actually comes in at two for the low density. They come at 2.3 or 3.1 or whatever they end up coming in at. So your density is then greater when than what you showed for the overall citywide. Because if you're including, you know, thousands of acres at two to five units an acre and you're calculating it all at two units an acre, and then all these developments come in at higher than two, you're going to get more units than you were showing on your calculations because you assumed the lowest possible scenario, which is how you have to prove that you can get there for the Met Council. But it's just to keep in mind that there will always be higher density than what we show as the lowest threshold. So I'm just going to quick get through the rest of this here and then we can open the discussion too. So I think I kind of went through this whole slide. So this is the map I was alluding to that left-hand side is Ramsey. Dark green and light green are the sewered areas that Met Council plans to serve in the long term. I mean, this is long-term service area. So like 2040, 2050 timeframe. Dayton's on the right-hand side. As you can see, Dayton's entirely within it for the entire community. And then Rogers is shown just a different color because it's treated through a different treatment system. So the metro has one septic treatment facility. Rogers has its own that the Met Council purchased. So it's just shown differently. But that's the reasoning of why Ramsey has that Musa line, even though they're classified as the same type of community as Dayton. I threw these up here. This is probably where we'll land for most of our discussions so we can point things out. 2040 future land use on the left, staging on the right. Threw both of them up there just because staging might inform if there's any potential changes on how things shake out. And then just a goal for the meeting. So this is a discussion between planning and city council on what you'd like to see for land use. And staff would like to see some takeaways or objectives so that hopefully we have something to work towards or a concrete goal we can bring back to you at a set meeting later on to know that we followed through on whatever the goals may be or the outcomes may be of this, this discussion. So.
So when you, so what are the parameters on our non-zoned, on our RE areas?
The, the light beige.
No, no, actually what I'm getting at is, is those were declared RE not long ago.
Talking about Thicket Hills.
Thicket Hills, actually most of them. I think, we, we had quite a bit for the 2018 update that there was a lot of what used to be called urban reserve. And it was converted to either 2050, wow. It was all over the place. So those urban reserve areas. I guess, here's my question. Can we create new RE areas?
No, we can't. So there's three land uses that are up there that we can't create anymore of. I think it's existing unsuared low density residential, existing sewered low density residential. Those are both existing land use categories. We can't add to the existing because they're not, they'd be new, they wouldn't be existing. And then the, well, we could add a small amount to rural estate, but rural estate, the, the language for it is that it's supposed to be concentrated on the river. So that's one of those ones where there's a, there are some river properties that aren't that, but you could certainly classify some to that district that are close to the river. But otherwise, the rest of the districts are all sewer and water anticipated.
How did we do this not even, you know, four years ago?
So what he's referring to is this area right here was not zoned rules, guided rural estate. And we just guided it rural estate and the Met Council accepted it. Now granted, it's existing single family homes. But, so it's not like a farm field.
Different scenario and then if it's an existing development, I mean, the classification you can change between the two as long as it still complies with the rules, but.
We did have, at one point, we had rural estate along Elm Creek on the east side of Fernbrook. And I think that was in the 2030 comp plan.
You're talking about the medium density there now?
And now it's medium density.
Yep.
Yep.
So I wasn't involved with that, but if you're guiding something that's lower than the density required, it means that likely you had to upzone or not upzone, guide it higher to a medium density classification somewhere else to make up for that. Because they, otherwise our calculations get off and the Met Council won't allow it. So if you're saying with an amendment to, to guide something a lower density down to one of the ones that isn't in policy with the three units acre, doesn't have sewer and water, you have to then guide something higher, go from medium to high density on another parcel.
And that was why that was moved to medium.
Correct.
There was a few of them that were done that way.
Those were moved to medium.
What I'm getting at is, you get areas like Thicket Hills, Lake Berkshire, a few other ones that were, that were turned into RE areas. They're 10 acre lots. They're turned into RE, which means they're going to stay untouched forever. How'd we do that?
I'd have to see the conversations that happen.
These are all existing homes, correct?
Uh, I don't know that, but at least the ones I'm thinking of are. But it's still, they're 10, they're 10 acre lots.
Yeah, and that's just, I guess, a different scenario because we're anticipating new development, not re-guiding something that's an existing development.
What I'm getting at is, how did we, how were we able to do that?
Likely that you said, because we're changing this to rural estate, we're going to change this low density to medium density.
No, RE is supposed to notch back to.
Supposed to come right out of the whole calculation.
It's supposed to take out of your calculation, is what we were told last time.
And.
I'm not familiar with that. I know Ag Reserve is considered an exempt from the, the state because of the classification it holds, but I didn't, I've never come across rural estate.
Urban reserve or Ag reserve?
The first.
Ag reserve.
I don't know if it helps us, but the first line of the rural estate says, this designation is applied to existing neighborhoods that have a developed, have developed as larger estate lots on private sector.
Yes. And that's where I think most of it is. My point is, 10 acre lots. And if Met Council is saying, we have to at some point sewer them, why would we do that?
And the last line of it says, if smaller sewered lots were ever requested for these area comp plan amendment would be required. So that kind of seems to me that it's still open potentially.
We don't have to sewer a, an existing neighborhood. So any of the existing classifications, we don't have to sewer because their classifications don't require it. So, but those eventually, yeah, in the full build out long-term 2090, when those homes get redeveloped, just like everything has a life cycle, those will eventually have sewer and water. But in our comp plan, there's areas that don't have sewer and water and those are the existing neighborhoods. So existing rural estate, existing rural residential, those are the ones that will never have sewer and water in, in the 2040 period that we've planned out.
And they are not included in density calculations, it says on here too.
Yeah, they're not. So is this?
So what is, what is your question? Is your question, how do we add more? Or how, how do we classify other ones?
I wonder how we did it in the first place.
Sure.
And obviously, I think that's, my understanding is from a few people around here that we want to add more RE areas. Now, I'm hearing we can't. And I really want to nail down whether that's this guy's opinion or it's a fact because.
I mean, the, Freya is the sector rep and I asked her point blank, like on the phone with her multiple times, how would we accomplish having more rural estate, rural residential, larger lot subdivisions? And her answer was, if they're in areas that you've planned for sewer and water, which is the entire community other than your existing neighborhoods, you can't have that because they're, they're no longer, they're not, whenever that was done, that was an existing neighborhood. So the, the rural estate, the existing unsuared low resident, low density residential, those are all existing neighborhoods that are unsuared right now.
So let me walk you through a scenario. You just said that you can do 10 acre lots. Let's say we do, just like Thicket Hills, we do a bunch of 10 acre lots. And we flip them to RE at the net comp plan.
I mean.
Isn't the question, Kevin, though, can we even do a 10 acre lot if the sewer pipe's not there? Do, does it have to have sewer today or not?
10 acres you can do because that's part of the flexible, that's like the interim solution that Met Council allows. They don't want you to go smaller than 10 acres because then it doesn't work to subdivide later on for, for sewer and water. So you can do 10 acres. And that's why they say you can do the stovepipe. So you can do 10 acres and that's why they say you can do the, the stovepipe, the 10-acre lots, or you can cluster and get that same density, which is four per 40.
Yeah, they, yeah, I, I think I said you, they, they even have a guide, guide for how you.
But there's nothing, if you did that, if you divided and had four 10-acre lots, and then at the next comp plan, you could call them existing rural estate because they were existing when you completed that next comp plan.
Which you can't do in front.
I would.
You don't get to write the rules, but you gotta play the game.
I, I would anticipate that they would push back on it hard to say that it has to stay low-density residential even though you've subdivided into four 10-acre lots because we still wanna plan for that sewer and water.
Okay.
But it's one of those things where you can submit things and try. Not saying it'll get approved, but.
You know, at the Planning Commission, the consensus, I don't know if everyone was on the same page, but the consensus was with the clustering or the 10-acre keyboard lots is it just creates nightmares with everything else. And that's why we were hoping at the Planning Commission that we could get down to two and a half acres because, and just make it permanent RE because then you don't have to worry about those future issues when the pipe comes through and how's it gonna work? How's it gonna happen?
And that's the hard no, is that there, there will never be a permanent rural residential that's always septic, that could be created now. So we, currently, anything that's not existing and already developed, we can't guide something for a two and a half acre lot on septic and well to remain permanently.
So the only way we'd really be able to add anything then would be to take a look at all the existing neighborhoods that are here and adjust land use around those if that was the ultimate in time, right? That's the only available opportunity we'd have?
Yeah, but you wouldn't be able, if it's an existing neighborhood, I don't know how you'd get any more lots out of it.
Well, we've got some existing neighborhoods right now that are guided for medium density in the future. I don't know if you really call it a neighborhood, but I guess that's probably open to some interpretation, but.
I meant more like the, you have the existing classifications of the existing unsewored low-density residential. I mean, you can try to, I don't know if the guiding that any different would change the number of lots that are in those existing neighborhoods. Because I don't think any of them really have much more space other than a few outlots close to the river that have small potential for maybe one or two more lots depending on how they're developed, but.
So what are we trying to do right now?
I feel like we're back at square one with the Planning Commission discussion. Meaning that it's really difficult to do it. If that's, if the case is you can't do two and a half acres, it's, you're trying to plan around 10-acre lots or even cluster developments is a big challenge that we could be setting the city up for other issues in the long term.
You know, that that's, I think our long-term goal is to make planning easier. I don't, to me, again, I've said this a million times, there's a lot of ag properties up there that they can't touch because they, they can't do anything with. They're too big and nobody wants to buy them. You can't buy a 40-acre piece and put a house on it.
No, it's, why, it's too expensive. So it just sits in.
Couple happened in the last five years in Dayton.
Yeah. But that's, but that's the point is to try to allow that, allow something to happen.
And we just had a request two weeks ago for this.
I will say, Dennis, I just did an appraisal in Dayton and I'm telling you that ag land and rural estate land are both the same value. And the reason being, it's, you just don't have the density. So, I mean, I get it someone wants to do something with their property, maybe for their family, but from a dollar perspective, it's, there's not some huge disparity of, there's a big windfall if we allow them to do something different with their land other than sell it for ag.
Yeah, I've had a hard time with that.
So then indirectly what you're saying is, and I guess it's, it's muted because Kevin's saying we can't do it. I'm just gonna throw a couple pieces out there. Just, this one is, this one's a, is a, right in here is a, let's see, I'll make sure where I am here. Oh, this is really tough to sewer. Or this, to me, would be ideal, one and a half acre lots, two acre lots. But if we can't even plan for that.
You could do two acre lots, we just have to do that sewer part. That's the problem is we have to do it sewer.
It still has to be sewer.
That's the issue.
So the lots are, you can do a bigger lot.
With the two and a half acre lot, the sewer has to be there today or does, can it be there in the future?
It has to be there when you develop it.
Today.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, so that's not gonna happen until 2050.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, everything is.
Forty.
Yeah, so everything, you know, staging plan-wise, if you wanted to, you know, there's some area, you know, up here that's 2020, 2030, if you wanted to say those are the areas we wanted one and a half acre lots, you could do that with sewer and water. You just have to make sure the density comes out equal for the city as a whole, or the three units acre. So if you changed this from low-density residential, or that's the master plan development community two, uh, to the rural residential or the sewored rural residential and went to the two or two and a half acre lots, somewhere else would have to up the density to, to account for the amount of units you would have by going down.
That's actually simple. All you have to do, and I'm just gonna, I'm gonna build a 500-unit apartment right there, but it never happens.
Yeah, I mean, that's a possibility too, but the, the lot sizes are, are, you can still do a larger lot, it just has to be sewer.
That was, by the way, what happened in 2018? They just started throwing high density, whether it makes sense or not.
In 2018 when we did the sure.
In the 2014 one, they just started.
Sure.
But, yeah.
So, John, back to John's question, is what's the consensus of continuing to exploring this or, or even, even I guess tonight compared to, because there's others, lots of other topics we can get to tonight too.
What, I mean, what, what's the pressure that you guys are seeing, you know, to allow?
It's just to allow more diversity. In the, in the goal or why are we doing this at all?
Yeah, well, I mean, like if we allow 10-acre lots, how many 10-acre lots are we gonna have?
Oh, I don't know.
No, not, not a lot. I mean, again, that's a. Earlier initiative was to. $150,000 expense. Look for areas that we could do rural estate, rural.
Like the area Scott pointed to between the two lakes, that would be perfect for rural estate.
That it would go, but I'm, I guess I'm a little lost on what, what we can even do now in that realm.
And I, I completely agree. There are areas, I've driven around Dayton a lot now to get familiar with the community, and there are areas that make sense for rural estate, even from my perspective, but the Met Council will not allow it unless it has sewer and water. And so, I know that the, the goal is to have it so that it's available, so that if someone came in in two months and wanted to subdivide their 40-acre property and have a rural estate development, they could do that. The Met Council will not allow that though. I mean, we have to have sewer and water there for them to develop. So more of it is just that we don't have sewer and water available to all these lots for them to develop now, and they will just have to wait until 2040 to when we can get them sewer and water.
When we were talking, you had mentioned that they could come to us, we could say, yeah, we're all for it, we get Met Council's approval. They could go to the Met Council and try to get approval as a one-off if they wanted to, right? And then Met Council may approve it or may not.
We won't if they can. We'd have to approve it first and then the Met Council.
Yeah, yeah, but we, we could approve it, right? And then the Met Council could come back and say, nope, sorry, not gonna work.
Yeah.
What do you guys think of picking one example, like maybe the example is the one Scott pointed to first and having, do us a little workup on it, why it's developed and have Kevin represent that to the Met Council? Because when you ask the Met Council a general question, you're gonna get a general answer. And so we want something very specific to one little area and if they say yes to that one, maybe there's two or three other areas just like it. But to me, that seems like if we wanna move this forward, it seems better to go that route than, I, I don't know what you guys think.
Especially saying, especially because 18 months ago, we were told we could do it.
You have one task for one small area, it's probably not gonna take a ton of commitment from us, but it'll give us the answer. Yeah, pick the right area that's well suited for it. I mean, the, the zoning talks about being near wetland. You drive up and down that area, there's no shortage of wetland right in that spot there, which is gonna make development challenging.
Yeah, and I, there, I did pose the, I'm gonna go back one slide, just so you can see. I did pose the question to Met Council, because Dayton is, I'll go to this, I guess. Dayton does have.
What's that? Yeah, what is that?
So this is metro service, this is potential metro service, which is what they, they're still considering, even though it's potential, they still wanna plan for it. So I posed the question, you know, this is kind of somewhat the area we would be looking to do.
Isn't that the park? There's a chunk, a chunk of it's the park.
No, it's the public works.
Oh, no, because.
So, you know, here's this.
Cause that little green jump-up is this right?
To see, is that an area, if we were pursuing it, could we do it in a smaller defined finite area? And if so, this is probably where it is, it's already potential metro on yours, how would you feel about that? And her answer was still no, um, but.
I think we have to explain the logic of why we're.
Right, so I think.
Road access, getting a sewer pipe or even in there.
You know.
The little spot right above that lower lake there is already sewered too. That comes out of the business development.
Yeah.
And the hard part is that the there is, I mean, like this community here has sewer now because of the failing septic system, so like it's already connected in. So anything this way closer to Rogers is probably not a great candidate just because it has, we've already sewored something further.
Right down the side of that lake, there's about 15 properties that are.
Yeah.
Exactly. We're dealing with topography, we're dealing with properties being cut off because there's unsewored properties in front of them and we're dealing with wetlands. And so, I don't know if this is the perfect candidate, but that's what you'd have to maybe even get Jason involved and said, if we were to pull a sewer pipe in, here's what it costs and even at two units per acre, we probably aren't gonna be able to get enough lots in there to even make it work.
Yeah, if, if we were to bring it up to Met Council, I'd wanna have some preliminary feasibility of how feasible it would be to sewer and water a site. It'd be helpful to have that in the discussions with Met Council.
Talking about Diamond Lake Woods.
Yep.
Okay, so really what you're saying is, according to Met Council, 10-acre lots is as good as we get.
Right.
Or cluster.
Those are unsewored, right?
Unsewored.
Unsewored, or we cluster unsewored, but do ag clustering so that four units per 40, no matter how you divide it up.
Right, so it'd be, you know, four 10-acre lots or four one acres with 36 acres of open space around.
And that was, that was the.
The cluster.
The cluster ordinance came uh before you in like 20, end of 2021, early 2022.
Yeah, that was the one, I didn't like it because you had 36 acres outlot. And the whole point of this was to get larger lots.
Well, you could do larger lots. You could do like three, two and a halves and then, you know, a giant 30-acre one or something. You could do it differently than one, 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 one and 36, but.
That's for you.
You could do it two and a half times by four and then 30 acres of outlot, so. But the ag clustering is more or less still.
That, that could be your option though to get two and a half acres, because if you have a 40-acre parcel, you can have four 10-acre lots or you can have four two and a half acre lots and a 30-acre remnant.
Or three two and a half acre lots and one remnant with one house on it.
Right, yeah. Any of those, those are all options still, yeah. So it gets you some lots that are.
Again, we had a, this discussion at the Planning Commission and, again, not everyone was maybe in consensus, but it creates challenges with pulling pipes through when you do.
Yep.
Well, it's a lot of work to get three ha, or four houses for 40, so.
Yep. If they want it.
I don't think many people want it that are, that own 40 acres.
Well, then nobody will do it.
That own 40 acres, I can't think of too many people that would just say, I'm on, on that, because.
Well, if, if I want two and a half acres, it'd be a lot easier to just go Ramsey.
Good point. Or further north, or further north.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And that's what people are doing, to be honest. I mean, people are moving further away that wanna be out of the city.
All right.
So, I guess my, you know, my hope in this whole thing has been that we end up with a, a variety of housing types from those large urban or suburban, ex, whatever the next word is, almost rural classification is, you know, along with townhouses and, and neighborhoods like the ones that we've, the only things we've been building. Okay, we, it seems like we've got that dialed in, right? That's the only thing that's coming through here. And so, you know, what else can we do that gets, gets some bigger, bigger places on, on the plan that still maintains this average because we're gonna do some higher density, you know, along 81 and, and some of the areas that are, that are classified for it, to get that balance. I'm not even sure that, that that's possible anymore. I mean, it's. I don't know, it seemed like we could do that, but I'm not so sure now.
I was gonna kinda ask us to change a little bit direction. I know the, the transportation plan is still in, I'll, I'll call it in flux. I mean, I, I listened to the last council meeting, the last couple, and know what you guys are recommending. But I think we need to look at what that plan is gonna, how that overlays with this map to then reclassify the properties along, along that transportation plan because those are gonna be, those roads that we're planning for are gonna be where the medium and high density want to be, not, not necessarily in the middle of that, you know, what used to be the X. And I, I think we're, I think this is great conversation. We might be a, two or three more of these is, might be what's needed because that plan's not adopted yet. And so, chicken or the egg, right? What comes first? And I think if we can figure out the road situation, we might be able to figure out where this is a good intersection or a good location for some medium or high density because of the roadway network. If you look at this, we've got two different classifications along.
I'm gonna pause you right there, Peter. Okay, give me one second.
I was gonna say, we have two different ones along French Lake and we know French Lake's not gonna diagonal like that in the future.
We have a map that we're preparing for the open house on Monday.
We already.
Very much helped with this conversation.
And that, and that's, that's what I was hoping we could, we could get to, at least something along those lines to start thinking about what it's gonna be in the future because if we're planning a roadway through it, that might mean it divides what that 40 acres looks like on either side of that roadway.
So he's pulling it up to get back to David's question a little bit. If we can put things as low-density residential, make it as an R3, which is what, two and a half acre lots? Am I getting that right?
R3 is the smallest.
R2, you mean.
R2.
Sorry, yeah. Which is what, two and a half acre lots are ghost plotted to eventually have three lots? You could do. You could do that, couldn't you, to help get more variety in, in homes? I, I'm all for the variety. I'm just trying to find ways to solve the problem of how do we get something that's more than a third of an acre if people want it? Right? And we had the, you know, conversation a few weeks ago about that.
And that's what you end up doing is, is you end up making married lots, sewer lots, but then you'd have to compensate. The average has to be three, that's, that's the bottom line.
But that, when we do, my question is, when we do that, do those ghost plots count towards our?
No.
No, okay. Yeah.
So to, to get the variety, is there any reason why someone can't buy more than one lot?
Unless the developer doesn't wanna sell it, you can buy two lots.
I was gonna say, they're gonna.
Developers will sell you unless you put a house in the middle, they don't care.
Yeah.
But most people don't wanna do that because.
They will not. They will not.
The gentleman did it in, he put a garage in one of his lots. I mean, it does happen.
Yeah.
Now, if you're a Lennar or a Holti, no.
Yeah, but that's, that's generally what we're getting is these big box developers. We're not getting, we're not getting a ton of the, the Hanson or David Weekly custom homes.
The most recent one was.
And the only ones that I'm aware of that people were able to buy was a problem with the lot. That one lot was too small to really do anything with. And there's another one, I think not far from you, just up the road, where it had a utility going through the middle of it, so they bought it. And they got it dirt cheap, but. Again, I, I can't tell you how many people tell me they want larger lots, but they can't get a new house except on a 30-acre lot. It's an old story.
That's more of a question though, lot size, not what we're talking about.
If you look at the average lot size down in my neighborhood, it's less than a quarter acre. And my, my lot is .19 acres or 1.8. It's tiny. And I tried to buy the lot next to mine. I, I made them an offer twice of what they were asking and they refused.
They want another house.
They can do, they can do it, but they won't. That's the problem. They can do it, but they won't.
Okay, so, so where did this road come from? Because this is a different shape. So now.
It's the same one then.
Exact exhibit just laid on the land use map.
Yep. That is option two that we've been talking about.
No.
Interesting how our land use map already had the X removed. I don't know if you guys noticed that. Our comp plan that we're working on so diligently, but the land use plan already has the X removed.
So that one looks like it's.
Transportation plan, Dan.
As you come off of 117.
Yep.
You're taking out Groves, Cloud Keys and two more lots, and I think you used to go through Cloud Keys, the next lot up.
It might be, this would be a fat marker on the paper. You could go south or north, whatever.
Generically.
This is generically laid out as best possible.
The reason I was alarmed by that is, those are all, you know, residences, and so that. The reason I was alarmed by that is, those are all, you know, residences, and so that makes it even more difficult, we're gonna have a half a time getting that road through, I'm telling you.
I think we could all beat our heads over different uses, but that's why I think you gotta think the long term in mind, and if it works itself out, it works itself out, but, because there's. One of the questions I have on this map is why the east-west, why such a dramatic east-west jog here, are we trying to accommodate East French Lake Road somehow, or why such a?
Yeah, that's on my list too.
I don't know, it looks like it's trying to avoid cutting through too many properties, like it's trying to slice through.
Because in fact, Peter's, Peter's question, and I think we've, some people have had this discussion, maybe you haven't heard it, East French Lake Road has the possibility someday of just being realigned, because we're. This exact issue, or eliminated.
Yeah, I, I mean, SRF was the one that prepared the map, so I don't know why they proposed that particular alignment.
That's exactly why we are with the way we are now.
I think there's two components that went.
Because SRF did it.
One of them is to cross East French Lake Road at a ninety degree, or as close to it, to as far as to accommodate.
Yep.
The other one was to stay south of those four keyboard lots, I'll call them, on the, on the east side, just to not go through them, I think it was intended to stay just on the south of it.
Which is the one you're thinking of, south of those keyboard lots, which is what you mentioned.
I think it was to stay south of these guys, and again, kind of minimize the disruption of the number of parcels.
The hardest thing I'm having with trying to work around ten acre keyboard lots is if, if that all becomes commercial, medium density, whatever, those people are gone, they don't want to be there anyway if their neighbors start developing that way, so. I just, I think you gotta do what's right and not try to avoid stuff, and then just deal with the consequences in the future.
Yeah, I mean, this is, it is future land use, it's not current, so I mean, we, I totally agree, we should be looking at whatever makes the most sense, and that feels like a lot of, it's just like a lot of weaving. Just to avoid a few laps.
Well.
Yeah, but that roadway alignment is not finalized, so everyone's aware, it can go kitty corner straight from one seventeenth, that's fine by us. It's just, it's a general concept to make sure that it goes from Zanzibar to the Parkway, if it goes kitty corner and then straight up, that's fine, if it goes up and then left and then up, that's fine, whatever.
But, yeah.
But this is also what's being presented at the open house?
Yes.
Yes.
This is the map that was at the April eleven council meeting?
Yep.
Yeah, and the decision to go move forward with this, so that's what's being presented at the.
So how far away does it have?
We didn't talk about this.
I remember seeing the, I remember seeing the J with the line of the lot, but I don't remember seeing the connection.
Yeah, but we didn't say.
What do you mean, do what?
This is.
We didn't say this. The J with the, with the one twenty-first or whatever.
To me, it makes more sense to come right through here and go this way.
I was just gonna ask that, why, yeah.
Why put all the curves in it, Scott?
Right this way.
You're taking all of that curve out of it.
You know, it's so even like, just continue up with one gradual curve, you know, don't do another zig, that's what I'm thinking.
You'd say, come up, just come straight up in a nice gradual bend to Zanzibar.
Yeah, nice gradual bend, and get up to Zanzibar.
And, and basically, Scott, what you're saying is, is plan for French Lake to go away at some point.
Correct.
So we don't have that, that odd.
Angle there.
Well, I imagine with medium density, with medium density going in there, they're gonna have to build some roadway structure in there to deal with that anyway, so I'm assuming that'll flatten out as it kind of gets redeveloped.
So SRF did this, the black line?
Yeah, that's.
They've done that, they did that years ago, the same, same line that they did.
Used to the shape and.
Correct.
I just laid the exact same, I just took it, I just scrubbed away the background on that one and put the land use map in it, so I didn't change any of the, the lines or anything like that.
Alright, well, okay.
Back to Peter's point, you know, obviously to get specific, so this work session, I think, is more about ideas, but once we have this alignment, I think that's where we get specific, but. You know, back to Peter's original question is, you know, what do we want to see along Dayton Parkway, and I think he's right on, is that, that's where the commercial, medium, actually, I'd say, commercial and high density. It goes commercial, high density, and then medium, and then low density, is usually the buffer, and the other dilemma, or shouldn't say dilemma, the other question that people should be asking themselves is, do we want to consider more industrial? And if so, what do we want that industrial to look like, because we're kind of out of it.
So I agree with the, the commercial, high density, medium density, and low density, I think that makes more sense, I don't have an answer on the industrial.
We have a lot of it. This is going to be a very limited access road, that you can have low density along it, it's just gonna be further setback with berms and buffers, it doesn't have to be all, it's not gonna be all commercial all the way up to Dayton River Road, it's not gonna be that way. If any of you drive through Rock, on Rockford Road, and I was thinking of a closer by example, Rockford Road has tons of low density and medium density about it, and there's just berms and, you know, sound walls.
Yeah, anybody new coming in is going to accept what's there, it's the, what's here now that's not gonna lighten what happens, maybe.
You know, in, in thinking of service, I'm thinking of like the other side of the ninety-four corridor, um, does it make sense to have people that, you know, is that more, you know, our interest isn't better to have industrial? Or some other, you know, whether it's a hotel, that's fine, but, you know, not residential. You know, you think of fire service and police service and everything else, would it be better to just have a big warehouse that's just gonna sit there forever?
Warehouses are good for city services. Yeah. But, you know, I, I guess I would say I don't want to see a bunch of million square foot warehouses either, I'd rather see a big mix of things.
I think for the types of applications we've seen on south of ninety-four, I mean, we haven't classified it as mixed use, we haven't seen much come through, and the ones that have come through have made sense, but they haven't pursued anything yet. So I, I, I would say south of ninety-four, don't worry about it, we classify it as industrial, I don't, I wouldn't imagine we're gonna get anything there, because of the way the wetlands are on the properties. It's gonna be another opus, which I don't think we want that type of building, or much more of those.
So, just one piece on the, because you're talking about the mixed use on the southwest corner.
Yeah.
Uh, we received an application on May first for that area.
For what?
Uh, for all the infrastructure, roadways, everything with outlots for the development.
What, what type?
What use?
We didn't, that's not part of the applications, outlots. Yep.
Oh, you're talking, oh, the Shaney property, yeah, we know that, we saw that earlier, he was gonna do that, we, yeah, we knew that, I don't know what we're gonna do with outlots, we knew that.
Outlots.
I, I don't, I don't disagree that, that whole corridor right there, that Parkway, it, it, I don't know how we figure out what goes where, but. That makes sense, because that's what we're really talking about, this, this part here was left. Um, from the twenty fourteen, actually. So, so they, they put in the X and they didn't change any of the land use, um, and so it's never made sense. So, at, at a minimum, yeah, we, we have to rearrange all that stuff, and it makes sense to follow the road up.
We, we need to make it efficient too, because again, this is gonna be one of the primary north-south traffic routes through town in the future, and so if it's not efficient, we're gonna be creating a major problem for ourselves in the future, so finding any way we can to streamline that area, and then just again, adjust land use to take advantage of the fact that we're gonna be running a lot of traffic by there is. Is, you know, the, the direction that I.
Yeah, the conflict, I mean, to me is really the truck traffic and the passenger traffic. And we're, we're hitting that conflict.
And access, I think people underestimate access, like when you look at this area right here, how they originally did it. If you really wanted this road, so Dayton Parkway was originally right here, if you really wanted Dayton Parkway to have limited access, and one seventeenth for the most part, the major east-west. You're gonna have a hard time shoving commercial uses in here, because they're gonna have to go all the way up here to come back to here, to get to where they're going, it's just not how it works, and so that's why I think it's better to push the commercial up to this area, just get by this stuff, because you're servicing the whole community of Dayton. I mean, we're not servicing, um, like a regional shopping area like Arbor Lakes, it's the Dayton residents, and if you consider it industrial, I don't, I'm saying this is the right answer, but I'm saying, I think the chunk between French Lake and here, maybe something else along Dayton Parkway like high density, but. That'd be the potential candidate for more industrial, that's what people were open to, from a land use perspective.
Well, that's how we kind of hide that, that, or it's high, it's high density already, isn't it?
Yeah.
We've kind of got that.
There's way too much high density in the map, because they use the, I forget what's the lowest units per acre in our high density, eight?
Eight to twelve.
Twelve floor.
That should be increased to twenty tomorrow, most multifamily is twenty-five to thirty, that's a four-story building, units per acre, and so we're killing ourself in our density calculations, meaning we need to show more orange in our map than we really need to, because we have to go to that low, it should be bumped up.
I think medium density is like six to eight or something.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, that, they usually averages right around eight, so.
Yep, yep.
It's the high density that's way too low.
Yeah, fifteen to twenty for this.
A high density.
And that's why you almost have to kind of do a little bit.
Actually, it's lower than that, Matt, I want to.
This is what, this is what this is, I don't know, this is what the.
It is lower than, I think it's.
There's a density kilk in the comp plan that has a number, that's on that sheet.
Okay, because I was gonna ask about the, the, the master plan development area that's way to the north, and what the, what the Met Council uses for that, for density, it's on here, but you're saying what's on here is about.
It'll begin that table that Kevin pulls up.
Okay.
High density, medi- minimum density for high density is fifteen.
Yeah, that's it. So it's fifteen to twenty?
Fifteen, yeah.
Fifteen, yeah.
Okay, so this might be right, because that's what this says.
Yeah.
It should.
So then, so then master plan development is four and a half?
Four and a half.
Okay. I was hoping that was just none.
Yeah, so that fifteen should go to twenty immediately, probably, it could even go to twenty-three or four, I mean, I don't want to get too close to maybe the low end, because whoever applies for something has to meet the requirement.
Your average density based on this is three point two two, that's based on this company.
That's final density after we commit to the open.
And Darren, you're saying that those numbers, that we harm ourselves by using.
Yeah, yeah, well, especially when you look at a map and realize we've got two hundred acres of high density, I mean, if you took two hundred and times twenty-five units, it's like, whoa, it just doesn't make sense, and it won't be that way.
Because the first couple of units that go in, they'll be way over the fifteen units, and then we'll have this banked, maybe that part.
Yeah.
But per you, this is the.
But the hardest part would be, and obviously when you get closer to developing this area, that's when you start to ju- I mean, these things get amended all the time, we're gonna amend it again, even five years, so as you get closer to that development timeframe, that's when you get the nuts and bolts figured out about, yeah, what were we doing? But the challenge where I'm having, looking at all of our plans, is how do we make decisions on Fernbrook realignment, when you have all this medium density here and it doesn't make sense, how do you make decisions, you know, on Dayton Parkway when people don't factor in accesses, and, and the density's up, and it looks like we have just a, you know, five hundred acre chunk of townhomes and apartments? It's like I'm trying to think of what city has five hundred acres of townhomes and apartments, I can't think of one, well, Minneapolis. But I'm thinking, especially in one area.
And you're primarily talking about the east. East area that, that.
Yeah, I'm talking about all this, all this high density right here, that's a lot of land, I mean, that's a lot of land.
Yep.
And then this is all medium density, and so is all that, and, you know, we don't probably need, that's not how it needs to be, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, you could, if you bump those densities up to things that are more realistic for minimums, it'll help solve some of it. We're, to be honest, I feel, I have no fear that we're gonna meet the density of three units an acre, it's just more presenting it, like Kevin was saying early on, is that you start doing this chunk right here, you can't just do this chunk, you have to do the whole city, because you have to show the Met Council you're meeting three units an acre.
So how do we get to where we're at least at a minimum covering the Parkway, and how, how do we, so. We get commercial along there, we get high density along there, how do we know, how do we judge where to put what? Um, or do we, is there some way to make it generic, so if somebody comes in, and they say, hey, I know you got this commercial, but I'm gonna put apartments here, or I want to put apartments here, or vice versa?
I would stay away from the too generic and adapt when you get there, because the too generic means more mixed use, and then we all look at each other and say, what does that mean? And, you know, if you gotta adapt, you adapt.
I, I think what we do is, we, we put a plan in place for the first area that's gonna start to develop, and, on either end, and then, and then adapt, so.
A large area plan?
I think you're saying prioritize how we attack this, because the areas of first concern are the current staging, which are north-south end.
Yep. And, and look at it from that perspective, how far out do we want the dense, the density or the commercial, or the, the high density or the commercial, and I, I agree with Darren, I think up to French Lake, that's way too much the way it is. You know, I think there's, there's some really nice, a couple of really nice homes that are along there, on nice lots that, yeah, they might subdivide into smaller lots, but why not have some lake lots? Why, why leave it be, why let it go to townhome, all townhomes along the French Lake, yeah, they're looking across at industrial, but people still like lake lots, yeah.
And the, the best townhome developments I've seen in the metro, I'd go to Woodbury, and the reason being is they intermix them amongst some of the single family developments, so you got a hundred acre development, like, let's just pick on Riverwalk, Riverwalk comes in, and this is why, you know, Maple Grove does PUDs, that's how you get your flexibility on this, is. They don't, you don't have to worry about the townhome designation then, is they come in and you just do a PUD, but you're kind of making them do the PUD versus them the other way, and you say, oh, by the way, and you're a hundred and twenty acres, we want this twenty acre corner over here townhomes, and the rest we want, you know, a single family, so you get your density, but, and your diversity in the same development to some degree, and we got a lot of big landowners that, you know, that's how it's likely gonna happen.
Yeah, I'm not too concerned about residential densities, it's, it's more on the other side of, how do you know? That this area here is gonna end up being business park versus commercial versus.
Dayton Parkway.
Mixed.
I guess that would be the big question, is how do we all envision Dayton Parkway, if you divi- if you envision it as divided highway going fifty, fifty-five miles an hour with very limited access, that's where everyone's gonna want to be.
Can we nail that down real quick, because I've had a couple of discussions with people, Jason, what is that plan, what is the ultimate plan for the Parkway, I thought it was forty-five?
Forty-five was the design speed that's been used to date, and I think the expectation was that that would be throughout the entire length.
Yeah, that's.
Not that it could change, I'm sure segments could be made to be up fifty-five, for example, but.
And it's fair to say that fewer east-west road intersections, the bigger chance that the speed limit goes up.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's alignment, it's grade, but, and it's access density, so yeah, and there's a long straight segment, as you can see.
So identifying your major east-west corridors, so like, when you guys are talking about the transportation plan, it's more than just Fernbrook if you're doing the whole plan, it's the east-west roads connecting between Fernbrook and Dayton Parkway. Is there just gonna be two, is there gonna be three, is there gonna be four, and the more you have, the more it impacts traffic flowing away, I'd rather have fewer, and then that's where you plan your commercial nodes around those major east-west intersections.
But it looks like there's gonna be four, I guess in my mind.
One seventeenth, one twenty-fifth, potentially one twenty-ninth, which I like.
That's what I would do.
And.
Hundred twenty-first.
So my question would be with the, the middle, a hundred and twenty-first, I think it's tested connected Dayton Parkway, but I don't know if it needs to connect all the way to Fernbrook.
True.
Meaning when you're looking at the transportation plan, you could have a north-south road that's going between one seventeenth and one twenty-ninth, just as easy.
Right down that power.
And that's gonna keep Fernbrook some of the traffic off there, on top of it, it's gonna force people living on this side, so if you had a north-south road here, it's gonna force people living on this side of the road to want to go to Dayton Parkway, which is what we want, we want to design Dayton Parkway for lots of traffic.
Okay, so how do we get to where we know where we're putting along the Parkway, business park, commercial, high density?
I think that's a question for you guys, and all of us, I guess, is what's your thoughts, I mean, obviously, there's gonna be commercial there, there's gonna be high density, there's no question, the question is, is, do we want to add industrial, business park, whatever we want to call it, and what is that in people's minds, is it distribution centers, is it more employment?
Darren, how, how far realistically could that be away from ninety-four?
So, take a peek at that, these red circles are three mile radiuses, so those are the major commercial corridors that already exist, and so the blue line is Dayton Parkway. So that's, it's a no-brainer, the commercial's gonna want to be there, it's a no-brainer, I'm talking grocery stores, more service orientated, you're not, the degree of big box, God only knows how long big box is gonna be around besides like the home improvement stores and stuff like that, they're changing so rapidly, what they're do, how they do it. Medical, and I say medical, not like, uh, well, clinics, more serving the community, medical clinics serving the community, not specialty clinics, but more serving the community, they would all want to be along Dayton Parkway, you look at every single neighborhood, all those uses are along their major roads, it's just that, when you look at these red circles, John. It's just that, when you look at these red circles, John. When you look at those red circles, what you gotta realize is that those are major roads. And so that's why I said, what do we want Dayton Parkway to look like? Those are major roads for that red circle, all those red circles. They're near interstates, they're near like Highway fifty-five, Highway ten. That's why we gotta really think about what do we want Dayton Parkway to look like? And to be honest, it was like a Rockford Road. If you try, if you were on Rockford Road between one sixty-nine and four ninety-four, it's a pretty good example. I think there's the commercial node right on four ninety-four, there's a commercial node on one sixty-nine, and there's a few minor ones in between. So strip centers in between with your pizza, hair salons, whatever, more serving the community. And honestly, I think that's all gonna fall in place once you guys have the transportation plan nailed down. I think it's that, that's gonna fall in place. The question is, is do you wanna add another element like business park, industrial?
I understand in, or warehouse is, is good for the city. Personally, I think we've got enough of that.
I'd rather see manufacturing.
So.
Or an office park or something.
So the city of Brooklyn Park is a good example, six-ten. Okay, it, we're on year like twenty-five. Yeah. It's been that long, believe it or not. Took a long time. The southwest corner of six-ten and one sixty-nine finally just got development. And this, real estate goes in cycles, finally just got developed, as well as the industrial park on one sixty-nine just north of there. Those guys are not distribution centers. Those guys are, do they have warehouse? And yeah, do they store stuff? Yeah. But they're not distribution centers. How much employment they have, I mean, I guess I'm not real certain, but there's like big companies along there. So if you wanted something like that, you create a guide zone and, you know, don't allow distribution centers, don't allow semi-truck storage. They're not gonna wanna go there if you don't allow it.
Right, right.
At the commission, I mean, we, we've talked about the six-ten model as being what we'd like to see on ninety-four, and then we give in because we're not, you know, the applications that are coming in are more for the distribution centers.
I think it goes back to Peter's point, though, why we're not seeing the applications we want is it's a tough area to work with.
Well, it is, you know, you look at the twenty-five years it took to develop six-ten, and we're looking at, you know, the five years that we've all been on the commission, and it's just, it's not fair for us.
Five really good years of development throughout the metro, though, for industrial. So I think it is a good comparison, meaning that this is, it goes in cycles. It's been a crazy cycle for industrial. And, you know, you could, we could guide this all business park tomorrow, and the cycle gets shut off for fifteen years like they had to wait in Brooklyn Park, too. So it goes both ways. But I think that's the thing, that if you, if we have the appetite for it, that's the land use, you slide in there. But the rest of it's gonna work itself out if we just kind of spot zone areas, commercial. And, you know, depth is a big thing. So when you think about your depth, the, the challenge we have is you're working with parcels, and you notice most of our land use designation always follows, well, not always, but a lot of times follows parcel boundaries. That's can be the challenge, is like when you look at the depth of parcels, it's pretty standard what people like to see for depth. I mean, there's variance, but, you know, so you kind of cut them off at that range and then decide if you wanna make it more or less, and you just adapt when you get to that property.
So I guess one topic I haven't heard a lot of discussion about yet is do, is there a focus on, and we kinda talked about it, I guess, a little bit. Do you wanna focus on one specific area for land use changes to kind of concentrate on the, you know, the Parkway, say, or another area potentially, and then also kind of, do we wanna proceed with the land use changes now? Or make these discussions, you know, talk about them, formalize them in some way, either through staff report or a resolution of understanding or something like that, and then proceed with them at the next comp plan update? Because I kinda like, would like to hear, I'm assuming Zach would too, do you wanna proceed with a mid-year update essentially to the comp plan? Because it would, it would, even changes to Dayton Parkway and all the land uses in there would change other chapters within the comp plan.
I guess the question comes back to is what's the staging area? And is it important to change it now, or is this something we, we develop and massage over the next couple of years to include in the next update?
Well, I mean, the next update is five years away.
I, I, that's what, that's what I'm saying. Is it a, is it a tomorrow, we need to like hit the ground running? Or is it a, we can have a meeting every quarter to massage it and get it ready for the, the five-year update?
It's not about five years. Let those updates come out in the mid-twenty.
Well, it's required by twenty twenty-eight. The forecasts, preliminary forecasts come out in twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, so we can start the process at two and a half years.
Yeah.
Start looking at it, yeah.
Roughly.
But the big thing will be whatever we've got guided right now for twenty twenty, maybe twenty thirty in consideration. Everything else is too far out to really be. Right. And that whole commercial area, medium density, high density, I say you don't do anything with it in the immediate term, because if you do, you gotta figure out the density throughout the rest of the city. And so more focus on knowing that we're gonna change it, but start with what Peter said, it was we gotta focus on the twenty twenty staging first. Current twenty twenty staging first. Unless, unless people are gonna be changing the staging plan too as part of this, then we need to look at those areas. But for starters, we need to look at current twenty. So your master plan development north Dayton. We need to decide, are we ditching the master plan? Is the city gonna do the master plan? Because that property could come in tomorrow with an application, say, open twenty twenty. And what are we gonna do about it? So we can get ahead of the ball and say, either stick the master plan and come up with a master plan, or, you know, get rid of the master plan and do something else. So that's one of the topics I think that we have to figure out. The twenty twenty area down there where Mr. Dean's property is, is kind of a mess, too. So this is all twenty twenty staging. So it's, unfortunately, it's right in the crux of some of our problems, but.
Yeah, how do we, I mean, how do we deal with that, the fact that, I mean, if we push this off?
You need to get your alignment straight first, and then some of it, and then one of your decisions you should be making is, or we should be making, is do you wanna move some of that commercial north? I think it's a good idea to move it north. And so if you move it north, what do you put in its place?
I guess what I'm getting at is if this is what our comp plan shows, and they wanna do something else, in the meantime, what happens if we have applications that, that, I mean, how, how do we deal with the fact that we don't wanna do this, but if we get applications?
That's why I think the best way to do it is start figuring out right now is what do we wanna do?
What do you wanna do?
And maybe, maybe, maybe.
What do you wanna do? We just defined our first area, maybe, too.
I think that's this area is a little bit. I think both those two areas are as important, and, because we don't know, I mean, obviously with the Dahlheimer property, if he came in, we could do what we did with Riverwalk and just do a one-off complement, but then we're also shooting ourselves if we really want a master plan area.
But there's only, on that master plan idea, there's about, Randy's land is the only that's in, in the twenty twenties, so there's only about a hundred acres of that piece.
Exactly. And so we could just do a one-off if we wanted to, but again, the dilemma would be maybe you're shooting yourself in the foot if you really thought you could do something different, but it's also really hard to master plan an area when there's multiple property owners.
So then the master plan needs a topic, but I think the question asked was, do we wanna do a full comp plan update? Or it sounds like there's a way that we can make a, city can pass a resolution, so it's known that this isn't this, what's posted as what we want is a match of what's on the website, basically?
Kind of, I mean.
My question is, I guess, is.
That's my question. How do we work at something that isn't at the comp?
So I, I think that's part of it. I'd say the other side of that is it's gonna take a lot of time and resources, and we don't have a planning team, so paying land for them, a lot of money to do it. If we do go the route we wanna update it, what's something like that cost us to do it?
Six figures. I don't know the scope without, without knowing exactly the changes on it, it's gonna be, it's a six-figure update. Because you have to do public open houses, you have to do public hearings. It's just like a full-blown comp plan. I mean, you have to do a bunch, you have to invite the community in for three, four, five meetings, same thing. You gotta update all the chapters, and it wouldn't be just.
And then we have to do it again in two and a half years, so we're gonna pay six figures after doing it again.
And if we do it in two and a half years, there's a chance we could just say we, we're not changing anything.
It could.
You still gotta do it. You just don't change anything.
Could, yes.
You have to finish it.
But what are the odds that nothing changes between now and two and a half years?
I don't know. Well, so one of the issues we're gonna have to deal with, Kevin, but how do we deal with this area that's in twenty twenty? Because we know the road changed, so all those uses are changing. How do we?
You do a master plan and you put that area in a moratorium while you're doing the master plan.
So in the master plan, without doing the rest of the city, is we just, how do we do that with the meeting the, the density kilk, Met Council requirements? Without saying, we're gonna do the rest of the city, too, to make sure we got it right.
So let's say you start with that area and you balance it out, and you say that area is, I mean, you still have to do the density calculation.
Right.
So it's still citywide as a total, but you can figure out more, I mean, like a master plan is essentially like taking your whole city, and now you're zooming in to one-tenth the scale or one-twentieth the scale, a smaller area, so you can concentrate on more finite, on like what the roads actually look like, what, coming more to that scale of, you know, we fat fingered the parcels and their land uses. Now let's drill down, and does it make more sense to show in a more finite area? You can also set, you know, when master plans are put in place, you might have design guidelines, more specific things like, we don't want distribution centers here, we don't want this type of retail, like, you know, gas stations or, you know, car washes or things like that. That's where you kind of drill down into some of those more minute things. The easiest examples I can get, give of adjacent communities is Corcoran did the northeast district as a master plan. That same thing envisioned, instead of just doing arterial roads, now you're looking at more of the local roadway network. How's that gonna tie into service, you know, kind of that second layer behind the arterial road? You know, what, what are more, some more finite land uses, or not finite, but smaller, you know, like kind of break, you can break it down to smaller chunks, things like that, and the same, and that was, Corcoran did a six-month moratorium to work through and adopt the northeast district, and once the plan was adopted, the moratorium lifted. And then people could come in, and that, some of the things they looked at is they were getting too many gas stations and didn't want them in this particular area, so they said no more gas stations in that area. There were some architectural guidelines on some major corridors. They, they didn't play around too much with land uses, because the land uses in there kind of already made sense, but then they added a lot of roadway networks. So the same type of thing where you can look and drill down into a smaller area. So that might be the appropriate thing to do. With land use, you still always have to balance the three-point-oh, so it's gonna, yeah, fall over into the total calculations.
If we didn't wanna do the whole city, one way we could do it is you guys could tell us, here's the density that our current comp plan says in our master plan area. And so we either gotta meet it or make it up somewhere else in the city to just focus on that one area.
Well, the south, I mean, we're not gonna have lower density. I mean, that, that's where all the land values are. So if we're doing industrial or medium or higher density.
That's my concern, though, is that area has a bunch of high density and medium, like acreage, so there's a lot of density requirement for our, meeting our three right here. And if this doesn't end up that way in our, in our master plan, that's where we might have to make, now we can make up by changing to fifteen to twenty for high density, too. That can just be a one-off.
Yeah, so if, let's say you picked an area and it was a hundred acres, and within that a hundred acres, and I'm just throwing out random numbers now, in that a hundred acres, you know, this is a high density area, so say your density average was ten units an acre, and then you master plan it and it drops to eight, you're gonna have to make it up somewhere else. But if you master plan it and it still stays at ten, you just shuffled things around, you're still fine, because that's, that same, that area stayed the same. But if you start, you know, taking out high density residential and throwing in commercial, you're gonna be dropping density in the area, and so you'll need to make that up somewhere else in the community.
And so somehow the master plan, okay, so if we master plan this area, somehow that allows us to not comply with the comp plan?
You still have to comply with the comp, like the density, but I'm saying it doesn't have cascading change. If you focus on one area, you can drill down, and you'll get more out of it than just the land use changes. You'll get like design guidelines and things, because master plans typically have that kind of.
Yeah, no, I get all that.
His question is, is that if we do a master plan in that area, and say we wanna move commercial here and this there and whatever.
Well, still have to get approved through Met Council, if that's what, I mean, it still has to get approved, just like any other.
Do we have to do a comp plan amendment, then, if somebody, so if they follow our master plan and we move commercial from here to here, would they have, would we have to do a comp plan amendment for that if somebody came in?
We'll have to do it anyways.
We will have to do it anyways, like.
No, I think what Zach was saying is we come up with a master plan. We got it all figured out.
Yep.
And then the first application says we don't like that. Will you guys amend it? Do we have to go back to the Met Council?
Yeah, because it'd still be a.
With a new master plan amendment?
That would be, yeah, because the master plan would be, you wouldn't really amend the master plan, you'd amend the future land use plan. Because the master plan is your, is your tool to say, here's what we'd like to show on our future land use plan, so that master plan would, the future land use would be part of it, but you get the, get the guidelines and the transportation networks and things like that that you would then incorporate into your comprehensive plan. So part of that master planning process is updating your comprehensive plan. And so those changes would just act like any other comprehensive plan amendment. So if somebody in somewhere else in the city came in and said, I don't wanna have this land use, I wanna have whatever the other one is, they still have to do a comprehensive plan amendment.
So what you're saying is we call something master plan in our comp plan. We have to have a plan? Because, I mean, we don't for that. I'm picking on us, because we don't for the other area.
So master plans are usually get adopted as an appendix into the zoning order.
Yeah, so that's where I think where there's a little confusion, is we have a master planned area with no formal plan.
Correct.
And.
Right.
We just kind of have loose numbers around with density. And I think that, is that a little bit where you're going, Dennis, where we're gonna get in trouble?
I think Dennis is saying, if we look at this area down here, and then we decide that we have to move things around, and let's say before we touch anything, it averaged eight, and then all of a sudden it averages five when we're done?
No, that's not even my concern either.
Oh, okay.
Right now, this is messed up.
Oh, with land uses.
Yeah, and so if we don't do an amendment, if we don't somehow update the comp plan, what are we complying with? Let's say we decide we're gonna run commercial, follow the road, right? That's what we want to do. This clearly doesn't show that. If we don't update our comp plan.
If we don't pay the six figures up to their comp plan, how do we?
No, no, I think we're saying.
We need smaller.
Smaller, so.
Yeah, just this area.
I think there's some confusion. The master plan, while it is its own document, you're still updating your comp plan. You're still changing the future land use map. You're still making those changes, and that would still get approved through Met Council. So you're still gonna have to do some of those, you know, changes to the density tables for the city as a whole, if they change everything like that. So that would still live separate from the master plan. I'm just saying, if you drilled down one area and do those changes to land use, it kind of makes sense to do the master plan alongside it, especially for the master plan community where you should have guidelines alongside it, for, so that when a developer comes in, they know this is what Dayton expects out of this community. You can choose to do one or both, but when you're doing one, it makes sense to do both. To do the master plan when you're actually planning the, the, for the land use. You can still do, like, let's say you only wanted to focus on Dayton Parkway south of one twenty-first. You can do that as a smaller effort. It's still gonna be an effort to update that, because it's a comp plan amendment and have to update density. I'm just saying, if you start cascading the changes to say, we're dropping this area here, you've gotta make it up somewhere else. And when you start pulling in other areas of the city, and that's what I'm saying, is the cascading effect, is if you drop density in this area, then.
That part I get. I'm just saying, I don't understand how we go forward if we don't fix this. And you're saying, we can fix this, and it won't be that expensive, it'll, it'll be, we'll still need to master plan it, or it might make sense to master plan it, and there's gonna be that expense to get that approved, but it's not the big behemoth that.
Right, if you concentrate the changes, then, I mean, just like with everything else, if you focus and now you only have to pay attention to this area and not any other areas of the city, same thing, like if you're thinking of sewer and water, the plan that's underway, they only have to modify for that one area. You're not looking at making changes and not various other areas of the city. It just reduces the scope. I was saying, if you start picking pieces all over the city and just start saying, you know, this is gonna go to medium, and this is gonna go to low, and then this one's gotta go to high, and then you start playing, that's where it's the, the domino effect of, to hit that balance, you still have to hit it, and then you're having to focus on the city as a whole.
Well, to me, it's kind of simple. We just get a whole bunch of these that are all white, about fifteen packs of markers. You start drawing.
That's if you're doing the whole thing.
Do the whole city.
Just in this area, just in this spot.
Oh, just in that area.
Just in that area, right there.
You're talking, you're talking roads, or you're talking?
You need to know. Yeah, I guess.
Well, I mean, if your road is your, your black line, now personally, I'd move it over a little bit closer to the, to the red.
You can adjust it whichever way you want it.
It's a general area, but.
Obviously, you're gonna have business park and, and all your, commercial is gonna be right there, plus you're gonna get a lot of, of high density right there, too. I mean, that main roadway is, is going to be where there's a business park, a business building, apartment buildings. It's gonna happen.
Well, I was gonna ask, so we have, you know, kind of where that, that sideways T is, we have, we're showing mixed use. And it's one way to somewhat get around this is to show. to somewhat get around this is to show mixed use along the Dayton Parkway corridor, to then accommodate applications for businesses or commercial, but also accommodate medium, medium and high density coming in along the corridor?
You're just saying a mixed use, mixed use, and a big hunk in category of.
Well, that's what our category is.
It is, but I don't think it includes, well, yeah.
But, but to extend it, extend it more than just the either side of that, the, whatever that, that would be, 123rd or something like that. But extend it on both sides and all the way down to basically where we, we drop the industrial and get rid of the red, and show it as mixed use and kind of see what the market says to come in, maybe expand our mixed use category to allow some of the things that we want in a commercial.
If we throw just a bunch of mixed use up and down there, is there anything that prevents all that from just sliding towards the residential use, and then we get a full residential corridor there, and we miss out on opportunity to build any sort of commercial or any other service base for the people that are living here though?
I think the way we do it, the way we do that would be through, as, as applications come in, we'd have to readjust how much residential we're allowing in.
It says here, only sixty percent of it should be used for residential, so to code it, if we've already used up forty percent or fifty percent of that, then you're gonna start, there's a whole bunch left, you're gonna have to start really reducing how much of it you offer residential in order to fit the need of the overall area.
And we could redefine, we could redefine that to make it more stringent, the Dayton Parkway mixed use might be twenty percent or thirty percent until it hits on 129th.
And one of the stipulations in the mixed use is that, you'll notice that we have five mixed use districts, GMU one through five, so each area has its own mixed use district that would then specify the uses and the, you know, the layout of, you know, do we expect four, do we want forty percent residential here, maximum per, per development project or per total mixed use area, do we anticipate, you know, these amount of commercial uses and these industrial uses, or no industrial and only commercial, those are all things that would lay out in the district.
The challenge with mixed use is, if Jason owned this property and Brad owned this block, and we all think that this is a better commercial site because of access, but Jason doesn't wanna sell his property, and Brad does, and a commercial user wants to come in, they go to the guy that wants to sell the property, and it could be vice versa with apartment building, you end up with apartment building where you really wanted commercial, and so that's the challenge, the downside of it, it, because you have different market participants that are different life cycles of when they wanna sell and not sell, so that can be the downside.
To do the master plan, where you say, this is gonna be an apartment building, and this is gonna be a gas station or wherever it is.
Yeah, ultimately, the master plan is spot zoning.
Yeah, you know, if the landowners aren't ready to sell, then it just.
Doesn't happen.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm not against mixed use, but it's, there can be downsides to it too.
I get it, I, I guess I was throwing that out there as an option to not go, not go down the rabbit hole in areas that we're gonna be revisiting in a couple of years, and we can just, we could just throw out more of a blanket along Dayton Parkway in the 2030 that we might call that mixed use, and then go down that path when we.
I think the bigger decision, like to give guidance, because obviously, I think we all get that we have to do something with this area and salt Dayton's current staging, is is that red gonna stay in the current staging, or is that red area gonna shift closer to 121st or above? I guess that's the dilemma, that's the question I have in my head, because if you shifted that red area north, then you have to figure out what else is gonna go there, it's obviously gotta shift somewhere, because the road shifted.
Yeah, to me, it should shift on both sides of that 121st line coming in.
I think it should be further north, if we're gonna be building commercial to serve the neighborhood, having it more centrally located within the city makes sense, versus having it that far south.
We already on planning had a chunk of neighborhood commercial right at 125th on the south end, that was Zanzibar T's right now, so I mean, we had already kind of guided some commercial in that area, knowing that we were gonna start running a north-south trunk through there.
And you want one big blob of red, so you really do.
To me, if anything, that looks like a decent starting point for that area, because we had already kind of planned it, and then I'd start expanding out that, that from there.
I think between 121st and 125th two are the primaries.
And you get on the straight part of that north-south road, rather than when you start to hit the winds, so as soon as you get people on the wind, you're basically exiting them down towards 94 at that point, and you're kind of kicking them out of that, that primary focus area.
And on that area, you can go on both sides of Dayton Parkway if you really wanted to, or in the current area, you can't.
Well, and, and down on the curve, as we've heard, these are fat markers drawn on the line, where that straightaway is pretty much where it's gonna be, right, the curve is, is a fat marker on the map, and it, it might shift.
Yeah, it might level out, and we set up two curves, it'll be one straighter line or something, you know.
Yeah, it, it's gonna be more fluxed down there, where, where Zanzibar extension is pretty solid.
It is the general area, where you can move it either which way by a few hundred feet, and it's not gonna much do anything different, just a general area.
Yep, even though we have it shown like that, it can go down like this, or like, that's why it's really hard for transportation, because when we're looking at transportation, we're never saying it has to go here, we're just generally saying, there, there's two connection points, and they'll be here, oh, you get there, it's kind of up to the development to get them, and we can adjust it, kind of maneuver as best we can to say, just like we did in the Lee property, so if you go back to the Lee property, originally it came in, it came in as a crooked, straight across the property, we said that's not gonna be the best route, and we adjusted it, and now talking about transportation, so we made it go straight up and down, so we adjusted that one, and then they did a straight up and down right away for us.
I think Dayton Parkway is way different.
It could be.
We need to figure it out, it's no adjusting, if we can't figure it out, we're gonna be in trouble. Especially, obviously, once we get by this first curve area, it's pretty figured out.
I, that's what I was gonna say, Dayton Parkway pass, you know, north, north of that, the red shown is pretty easy to figure out, there's no homes abutting to it, it's, it's Zanzibar, south of there, it's, there's some massage you need to do, there's a lot of current homes, and what's gonna be available for sale, and what.
The idea is gonna be moving traffic, that is the idea of Parkway, so when we come in with developments, we will try to get them to move traffic as best as possible, like you said, we may have to adjust a little bit, get it to work while at the T it's gonna be at right now, at 117th, but.
Well, it's gonna be controlled by access, I mean, push the accesses back, but, and that's why, again, I'd rather have us figure it out, because what happened, Dennis knows this, because we, but what happened is when the cubes came in, it shifted already, that's why it doesn't even align up with the red stuff, and it wasn't even brought or reviewed from that concept that it shifted, and I don't know whether it's right or wrong, but it shifted, and, you know, you definitely see a bigger curve now, there'd be way less of a curve, it would've stuck to its original pattern.
Yeah, it's, it's a side issue, but maybe a J issue, but those properties were assessed via that use.
Yep.
And I don't know what that.
So that alignment should get pretty nailed down to a T, and the east-west.
Well, it should have been reviewed and approved, again, after an alignment changes with a major roadway, but at the last where we're here now and we're moving forward.
Is there a consensus to do master plan on the, the south Parkway, south end of Parkway?
I think, I'm in favor.
That's what it sounds like.
You certainly gotta make some kind of a plan, yeah.
I'm not gonna define it right now.
Then yes, I agree with that.
Over the north.
I, I think you said this before, growth from the south is kind of makes the most sense, given the roadways and kind of where sewer and water comes from and the.
You're talking about the.
By Dahlheimers.
Yeah.
Everything we develop on the north end right now has, has nowhere to go but taking long transit routes through town.
This is what will make the north part make more sense, once we get this figured out.
I think part of the problem we're running into with growth though, is that we've got low growth up here, low growth over there. We need to grow from one side across, because it will better fill our infrastructure and help us to just grow more successfully, I think, and that's what makes Dayton unique, if not from the center out, or from one side across, and we have all these unique challenges with three different water systems and all this stuff, just because we haven't had a plan to grow from one side to the other, I would rather see us grow from, and take your pick on what side, I, I'm open to hear, but I think picking a side and saying, we wanna grow from this side up, I think makes a lot more sense for the overall growth of the community, and for the city to be able to try to hopefully catch up eventually with the growth we've already had, and then keep pace, because we're behind, we gotta get caught up.
Well, in the south here, we have, we have control of everything, whereas in the north, we don't, we can't touch the river road, we, we, we can't just run a road down the Parkway, we, yeah, so anyways.
So Matt, are you saying take the twenty, the current to 2020 in the north and make it 2030?
I'm not saying, we could, yeah, I'm open to.
I mean, there's not much left.
Yeah, there's not a whole, yeah, there's a little slotted it left, I'm not, I'm neither for it nor against it, I, I'm just saying if we're gonna try to guide growth, to me, it makes sense to stop doing pockets of growth all over the place, and to just pick a direction and grow.
It's hard to chase utilities around all these little pockets.
Yeah, and it's, it's causing a lot of work, we're reaping the, the decisions that were made around that from the past, we have to accept them and auto fix them, but I think we can set what that pace looks like going forward, that's my opinion.
Well, it's gonna be a more cross-structured approach if we take it that way too, because again, we're.
It seems to be consensus that we, that we focus on the south, in part, well, driven certainly by the transportation changes that we're making are gonna, have made a lot of this not work.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
So.
So.
That's our focus.
Yep.
It's to do to do the south end.
So how big would this master plan be?
Well, I mean, to me, it's got, it's gotta, it's gotta almost come down to where Zanzibar starts to turn, somewhere in there.
So, the 121st, everything south of 121st?
Give or take in that area, at least, I mean, to me, everything in that area is where we've got some ambiguity, where that road's gonna end up.
Where Dayton Parkway goes through is gonna matter.
Yeah, I think everything south of 121st is probably the highest priority, but I would almost argue, like, everything south of 125th.
Especially if we're talking about moving commercial.
Yeah, that's, yeah, because we're probably, well, I would almost go even further north than that, just because, no, a hundred, yeah, maybe a hundred, I don't know, north of that, kind of where like the park reserve chunk drops down right there, because I feel like we're gonna move around medium and high density, and it's gonna affect all of that area there, so if we're certain we're on some and not the other, it could have effects too.
I would say the park, so when SRF did, you know, whatever plan they did, I mean, I remember, you know, 121 was going to be the busiest road in Dayton, and that, that was a little shock, but because you've got the east-west traffic going through Champlin to wherever that terminates, whether it goes to Rogers or not, so I would pick that as the north border and then just go south.
Do you say it was a north border?
Uh, the park.
The problem is we can't, I mean, that's too big an area.
Yeah, I was saying, I think we still, I agree with you that the big picture, you gotta get it, but you can't, that's a really big area. I think you have to start with.
I would look at land use from 121st south, or not land use, master plan 121st south, land use up to the park.
Yes.
And that would, that would cover your concern, John, but not master planning at all.
I also think it makes sense where Dead Man's Curve is on Fernbrook there, just bring that straight across.
Yes, I haven't heard anybody say not, to me, it's.
There's, there's one little chunk of wetland that shows in there, and either if you find a way to clear that, or you just come around it a little bit, one way or the other, I think that's, that gives a clean path across there, and it does get rid of that curve.
But I don't know that that, I mean, I don't know that that has any bearing on the transportation plan right now.
I, I think.
Well, should.
I think from a, from a, I think that's like an ideal place for, I think that's an ideal place for commercial though, is where that comes all the way across to Dayton Parkway.
I can guarantee you nothing's gonna happen in that area, because it's post 2050 land.
Yeah, see, that's.
That's not, yeah, that's not true, I'm, I'm just, I'm gonna, that's just not true, that's what our current plan says, but if, if this is all post 2050, it's just, then we should just stop at our, our little master planned area, just at the 2020 staging, I just don't believe it, our, our forecasts are 120 homes a year, so I just don't believe it.
And if our, if our plan is to work from like south to north, if that's kind of like the general consensus, working from one side of the city up, I mean, we're gonna probably look at adjusting the staging plan anyways to start escalating some of the stuff in the south side and start pushing out some of the stuff on the northern, because that's what would make the transition occur.
So, salt Dayton, I went through, it's 2,600, almost 2,700 acres, if you just put that all low density residential, which I know it's not gonna be, but I was just trying to do simple math, and you did 200 homes a year, it takes 25 years to build it out, okay? If you did 300 homes a year, it takes 17 years to build out, Dayton Parkway needs to be up there five to 10 years before it's fully built out, you can't just keep building homes without Dayton Parkway, and so there's no way any of that stuff's 2050 if we're focusing on salt Dayton, I mean, if, if there was a bunch, the suburbs around us with a bunch of vacant land, I'd, I'd say, okay, maybe it is, but there's not.
What I'm saying is there's no point, you could pull one side of the page now, I'm sure that's not gonna matter or anything, what I'm saying is it's, it's not gonna be done before the next comp plan's done anyways, so, we're talking five years or less for that next comp plan, that, the same exact.
We don't make decisions now.
To get this into this current transportation plan, we're gonna be making an update in five years.
Or three years. Two or three years, we have to start it.
But how do we do land use designations if we don't know the, I'm not talking, I'm talking to major east-west roads, if we don't know where they are, how can we sit down and have logical conversations about land use?
Well, I think that's why we're saying we focus on south of 121st there, because then we'd kind of know generically some lines around.
I heard land use up to the park, and master plan 121st.
What you mean, you gotta know where your road is going?
You need to know where your roads are.
Matt, the, the reason I say the land use up, up, up to one, to the park, if you look at, you look at what they, what we did in the past around French Lake, and we knew, we know French Lake is not gonna be the, the backward seven in the future.
Do we, or will it be dead?
Well, I think you take it out of there.
Well, how do you take, how do you do that with existing homes?
I understand what you're saying.
It'll make more sense in the master plan, Dennis.
I, I understand what you're saying of how you, how do you get rid of it, but.
I agree.
But it's, it's, it's not logical on the map, the way it's shown, for future use, and so what I, what I'm saying is, is maybe we just, you know, paint a, paint a brush of, okay, we need, we need an area of medium density in 40 acres, and then we know there's gonna be a major roadway on 129th when it connects to, to Zanzibar, so let's put it up closer to that as the land use, that's, that's what I'm talking about, not, not relooking at it.
Yeah, and what I'm saying is if people think 129th's gonna exist, put it on the transportation plan now, I don't, if people think it's gonna exist, we can always take it off later if it doesn't exist, but if the consensus is it makes sense, put it on the plan.
Sure.
What does that do to the timeline for the plan?
Nothing.
So you're running a line across here.
Plan update?
Yeah, we gotta do it to change the whole thing, so we, we know.
A line across here. Personally.
And everything keeps it.
I thought it's still administrative review.
It, I hope it would still be from the Met Council from a timeline perspective, but I'm just saying like, we don't have any maps or we haven't run the open house on that, because we notified everybody of one thing, and then it would be changing it to another.
So I think the important thing, basically, what I'm hearing, the side conversation, we just focus on south of 125th for now, knowing that, that, that's the main, I mean, most of the major road, when we look at transportation plan, that's the major changes, I think anyways, the south of 125th, I think everything north of 125th is, for the most part, already there.
Pretty much.
Pretty much, yeah, plus we want this whole process to take until we have to redo the comp plan, I think that makes the most sense.
I'm just trying to avoid spending a lot of money now to then spend it again.
That's what I'm praying to do.
Yes.
Because I don't want, I, I don't want you to spend money from the taxpayers and that are in other funds and things, to do something that is then required again on new forecasts, because I don't know what those forecasts are gonna be from Met Council, will it go from Dayton, you know, because back in 2008, the forecast for Dayton was like 700 and something homes per year, it was.
We don't have to rely on the Met Council's forecast.
You have to base your entire comp plan on them.
No, no, that's not works, I, I work for the Met Council and this stuff, that's not the way it works, you come up and agree to your growth strategies, and when they shove their growth strategy on, I've had this conversation with Freya, she's like, that's what our demographic people said, and I said, well, how come this community did this, because other communities did other stuff?
You can push back on them.
Absolutely, and you give them your plan, and they're gonna, I mean, again, if we would've came in at 250 or 300 homes a year, they went, they squawked it all, if you came in at 600, different story, they shouldn't squawk.
I'm just saying those forecasts are where you base it off, so you can, you can go back and forth with the council.
And Met Council knows, because we've been over and over in lawsuits with them, they've historically blown their forecasts in every single developing community with, meaning when you're going from 6,000 to 12,000, obviously, once you get like 25, 30,000, it becomes way more predictable of the two, three percent growth, but their growth projections are just historically so wrong.
I'm just trying to say that the, those are gonna come out and they're gonna change.
I wanna drive this from our community perspective, not the Met Council's perspective, is what I'm trying to say to you, I'm not trying to pick on you, I'm saying we tell them what we want, not them tell us what we want, as far as growth.
Well, if we could, if we could do that, we'd have the whole thing roar as.
No, I'm talking about growth, I'm not talking, I'm not talking land use, I'm not talking land use, I'm talking things that makes sense.
And we don't have to be unreasonable either, right, I mean, we can go to them with, with something that sounds reasonable, and I mean, they can come back and they can say no, or they can ask for some adjustment to it, but I don't think there's any problem with us putting down something that seems reasonable and that people want.
And I'm starting to get off target, but I agree, the focus is the 2020 staging area we've been talking about, this should be the master plan.
Okay, so, it sounds like, is anybody not in agreement that from 121st on down, we want a master plan in that area?
Uh, what's the, what's the border up to the yellow area on the current map, or when you say all the way to Fernbrook, or what?
Only if we have to adjust densities, but I wouldn't think we would.
That, that all depends on how you move things around.
What I'm getting at is, it doesn't make sense to me. What I'm getting at is, it doesn't make sense to me that that the the low density right now, to do anything with that in order to compensate what we're doing on the on the on the on the west side. I mean, it seems to me, really, what we're gonna do is, well, we're we're gonna get into problem with average density, because if we take that commercial and move it up here, actually, that'll increase our density, won't it, for that small piece?
Yep.
Yeah.
Whatever you, wherever you move that, you could just shift whatever's there down if it fits, too. Like, you could. My question is, is do we wanna look at what's on the east side of Fernbrook? Because I still, I think that was just like a.
Do we need the medium density portion?
Yeah, we just need extra densities, just flag it in there and see what happens. I don't know how much thought I could do to that.
I don't think you wanna put more traffic on Fernbrook.
I don't, no, that's why.
I take it out of there.
That's why I'm. Twenty forty staging, so.
Yeah, none of us in the current stage is.
Critical to before the next.
But it was literally the last hour of the.
Was it? It was just somebody said, we need more, just, okay. It's what it looks like, so.
I will say, in the long term, if the goal is to get rid of some of those accesses, though, you do consider bumping someone up in the staging plan, because as it develops, those accesses will go away with whatever use comes in. And I'm not saying to do that now. I'm just saying that in in the big picture, that's how you can help solve some of your problems is with land use and staging.
If if we take the same principle that we applied at these areas, this here, whatever, what's that, one hundred and sixty acres or so, that is all neighborhoods already.
Yep.
And these are the, these are the keyboard lots that need to maybe come out.
Are you saying make those rural estate because they're existing lots?
These ones.
Yeah.
Well, it's it's, you see this right here. There's already a neighborhood. It's already.
I'd be cautious making anything rural estate because those. I'd be cautious making anything rural estate, because those owners can do whatever they want with their land right now, meaning they can stay there for the next fifty years, sell to their kids, stay there fifty years. This gives them, I shouldn't say this, because I don't like the intensity, but keeping the the public sewer option open is better than just making it a rural state.
I I don't disagree with you on that. I'm I'm more looking at it, if we're looking at changing the land use, those are the ones that don't seem to make sense to move to medium. The ones that have access issues along Fernbrook do.
To move those to medium?
Well, to to, the ones down on the the south end that I pointed out, seem to make sense to to leave in like a residential, a a low residential category. The ones north of there that are more of the keyword lots seem to, I don't know what, I don't know what the right designation is, but those ones don't seem like they'll stick around as long as the ones closer to that Elm Creek Parkway.
So what's next? We've been talking for an hour and a half. What's next?
On the planning commission.
I think we were here till nine thirty or so.
On the planning commission, to tackle the South Dayton planned use area. I can't stress how important it is that the transportation plan gets figured out. So vetting one twenty first is probably, should be done a little bit. You're going through a, you know, undeveloped land swamp trees. Let's make sure that, you know what, this passes the test, the sniff test, like, yeah, we can do this.
We're gonna do any engineering on any of this stuff, so.
I'm 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 not the engineer.
I would hope that SRF did it when they did it, but I don't.
Oh, I don't trust that, sorry.
That's not working hopes and prayers.
People put too many things on paper with two dimensions and don't recognize the other issues. So, again, if we're gonna be focusing on up the one twenty first, let's make sure if this is going in our transportation plan, this H to one twenty first, I don't know what steps need to be done. That's the question to you guys, but let's bet it to say that, yeah, this this'll work. This isn't some extraordinary dumb thing to do because of wetlands or whatever it may be.
How often do you want another north-south? Okay, you're gonna have the powerway running to Zanzibar. How soon between there and Fernbrook do you want another north-south? Because to me, right down that power line is the ideal spot for north-south.
I I agree with that.
If we did one down the north-south, I would stop one twenty first at that road and not even pull it through the wetlands.
Yeah.
But that's, again, that's the transportation plan. That's, I mean, that's how important it is. So you get your land uses right.
Make a plan and go with it.
Yeah. I agree with what you just said. I'd do it. I'd put it on paper and start vetting it. Make sure it makes sense.
Okay, did you put that down, Jay?
Well, we can't do anything now.
More the concept of vetting it.
I have no problem with, like I said, none of this was done with engineering. When we did the transportation plan amendment, it was to be able to adjust to get, the focus was getting the Parkway in. That was the main focus of the transportation plan amendment.
And so when you say getting the transportation plan vetted or getting that vetted, what do you, are you referring to a a master plan?
No, no, I'm just making sure we're not, because we're looking at a piece of paper or aerials, thinking we can just do it, and, you know, maybe there's more swamps and wetlands or topography changes.
The important thing that was pointed out earlier is this is, these are lines on a whiteboard, meaning that.
Work in reality sometimes.
No, no, but my point is, these aren't.
Yeah, go ahead.
I can maybe, this area, one hundred and twenty first, where are we at here?
One hundred and twenty first is the thick line.
Yep, right here, right here. You've got some wetland challenges in through here, up to that power line corridor that I showed you.
Yep.
It's.
Bad. It's bad. You almost see a bridge there. It's not gonna be a road. It's gonna be a bridge.
And that's.
Yeah.
To a bulk there.
I think, yeah, and didn't you mention, Darren, that really we would probably dead end or not necessarily dead end?
If there was a north-south road going the other direction.
You might run one hundred and twenty first over to this north-south.
Feel so good, because the rest of the corridor to the west is pretty stretchy.
Yeah.
Topography not too crazy? Good. That's what I mean by vetting it.
There's some hills. There's not a lot. There's some, it's not flat.
When we do this transportation plan in the comp plan, it doesn't mean that that's exactly where it's gonna be or necessarily that it's gonna go through.
Lines on a whiteboard.
So when you say vetted, are you you back to the master plan and that's where you vetted?
I'm more talking a very high-level vetting, just.
Doing doing this.
Doing what Brad just did. Is that road even gonna be feasible?
Okay.
We just raised.
It's feasible, which one's spent? That's the question.
My concern was trying to do more engineering and stuff, because it costs, just costs more money and more time and then doing through engineering for a road that's not gonna be there for another thirty years, you know, or twenty years or fifty, whatever it is.
I don't, I get into theirs, but I don't know how much engineering we really need to put in to to make a basic assessment of, is there gonna be something that's a massive problem? Like, when we look at one twenty nine, we know there's this little chunk of wetland right there. It's obviously gonna be a problem we have to work around, but that's mostly flat, whereas this, if this is a much more challenging wetland, I mean, that just exponentially brings up the cost when you have to actually come around and deal with it. Right. And if the consensus is a north-south along the power line, you don't even have to worry about vetting the approximate two thousand feet of swamp you gotta go through if you really wanted to pull one twenty first to Fernbrook. It's two thousand feet. If we don't get the transportation locked down ahead of time, though, wind development does start to come through, and we all of a sudden go, no, we don't like the way that road's going, now we're right back to the lead development issue again, so we really. Exactly, that's why we need that north-south. Even though it's not gonna be like a permanent, this is exactly where it'll go, we can say this is the guidance of where it should go.
How far do you think that north-south, like, what would you say that should go?
It'll go to one twenty ninth.
All the way to one twenty ninth.
How far south?
All the way to one seventeen, thirteen, I think.
One seventeen, one seventeen.
One seventeen, for sure.
One seventeen. Can't go any further because.
Yeah. We've already approved Brimont Trails, too.
Cut that off.
Yeah.
I disagree with your idea. I think the idea is great. Don't waste you with it. Just wanna make sure that when we do things that.
The easement and the lead property.
It's jogged.
Understood.
Yeah.
So did we just make an adjustment to the comp plan or the transportation plan, or what?
Not at this point. I mean, unless you guys wanna have redo of the whole thing.
Great. So see, see, really, what we're talking about is in the three to five years when we make the next update.
That's what all these changes are gonna be put on.
For the transportation.
I personally think if if you guys believe in that north-south road, you need to put it in now, because when Brad or the north lead property comes through, we're gonna be looking at it again north of one seventeen. So if you guys believe that's the answer, we need to incorporate it or do what we need to understand. That's the right thing to incorporate. That particular.
To me, it's a logical place for north-south.
It it is. I'm just saying, is this something we need to get ahead? Is this something we need to get in this and then?
We we'd have to.
And if you're doing that area, you gotta have your.
So I think, I think the problem is, if if we decide we wanna do that right now, we scratch the open house on Monday, and we start everything all over.
Which, yeah, which I was just told by Kevin, we have to redo the entire thing, because we didn't post that as the plan. We posted this as the plan.
Correct.
Of the new roadway. It would be these two new roads.
And I'm not picking on anyone, but this is the most frustrating thing, because when the transportation plan amendment came up, I was in many people's ears about all these issues right here. This is not news to people, some people in this room, is that you can't just have a transportation plan focused on Fernbrook, no X or no X. There's there's other consequences.
Well, that's okay if we change it, because originally I was gonna have my mother over for walleye dinner on Monday.
Well, we can, uh, make it easy, please.
With my advice.
Glad we're looking at your walleye dinner, Scott.
Oh, I did get some, I got some residents a little tweet that we.
Got the day of the week, huh?
Trying to fool them.
Yeah. We have a real struggle with that at the city. That's not the first time this has happened.
Yeah.
I'm looking at, I didn't even review. I did, it's all on landform.
I was thinking Thursday, May fourth, and then.
Okay, so so that that means the next one's non-billable, since the next one, we have to redo it.
I will, mate.
Good luck with that. What does that do to us as far as timeline?
If you wanna change stuff with the transportation plan, we have to redo the entire process, between public hearing again, entire process, remove the open house. We're talking at least two, three months of process left. We'd have to restart it again from what we've been doing. So we, when we start it in March, and we're gonna be ending in June.
I'm not overly concerned about one hundred and twenty ninth, but if we do wanna preserve that north-south piece, is it, is this a risk if we don't get it in here?
Well, hang on for one second. That north-south piece right now is in twenty fifty, so.
The good news is twenty thirty.
Bottom cell chunk is twenty thirty. That's the good news. So as long as we get it into this next comp plan cycle.
If it's in the next comp plan cycle, we have no issue.
Unless we pull in.
Well, there's, there is the other elephant in the room, is that depending on what we do and what happens in the development cycle, there's not a lot of land in twenty twenty for low density. And I'm not saying we need to pull more in, but there's just not a lot of land in twenty twenty.
And I think when we look at this master plan, I think we'll we'll probably look at that as as to what needs to be pulled in, because.
Well, is there, is there any issue in, I mean, if we gotta redo the transportation plan starting tomorrow to to do this, or do it after we decide what's pulling into twenty twenty?
Couldn't we just?
The same cost. You know what I'm saying?
As we do the master plan, couldn't we just look at the master plan and say, yeah, we think a north-south road should be here as part of the master plan that we do?
But it's gonna be adopted in the comp plan, so it should be consistent with the transportation plan.
I understand that. But we don't have every road we ever plan on building on this. These are, right?
These, we're focusing on the major arterial roads.
Yeah. I understand. I'm trying to get a little bit creative with like.
Let's call it a neighborhood collector for the comp plan and then update it to a collector or a arterial.
Minor arterial for.
On the, during the next comp plan update.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm getting at. Like, we could, we could use this master plan to get after the same end result. We're just gonna get a little creative with how we do it, thinking outside the box.
Do you change it more like a Rush Creek Parkway or a something like that versus a minor arterial?
Sure. Because it might want to be, I mean.
Yeah, I don't know if it needs to be a.
It might be like.
It's gonna be more like a Pioneer Parkway.
Yeah, I say, a parkway feels more needed than.
More a sample girl, where it kinda runs to the back of.
It's not gonna be crazy.
It's not gonna have resident, or it's not gonna have commercial on it.
No.
I don't see it as a four-lane road. I see it as, as like a parkway, which to me doesn't need to be.
It would not be on the transportation plan.
Yeah, then we don't need a transportation plan.
Would not be, because it's a major residential road if it's.
Pioneer Parkway is.
Pioneer Parkway is.
Pioneer Parkway, okay, well, then.
It'd be similar to that.
Yeah, but not all the parkways, Sundance Park, the one that goes to Sundance Woods isn't there. River Hills Parkway isn't on there.
I don't know.
I'm just, and all the parkways are on here, is what I'm telling you. So, like, I, that's inconsistent.
My guess is where the.
Focus on the work.
No, it doesn't, but I'm just.
Because we wanted to preserve it.
I don't, yeah.
And I think it was.
I don't think Pioneer Parkway is technically designated as an arterial street, so I don't believe it needs to be in that transportation plan. I don't think we sent it out with that, did we? I don't think we did. On this map, you can see it only because SRF did the overlay quick, but I don't believe that it's considered a major roadway, so it needs to be in the plan, because it's not a four-lane or collector.
Sundance Woods is fed by a parkway, right? That road, that turn off of Fernbrook there, is that technically a parkway? I don't know the street name.
Take which one?
Rush Creek.
It's called Rush Creek Parkway.
Just because it called a parkway, that we're calling it Dayton Parkway, too, so don't get hung up on the parkway.
Correct.
Okay, so we're fine with the transportation amendment as it's going forward?
I think so.
Other than the residents being a little.
We didn't try to hide the date.
No, no, I I know that.
The name.
The name of the day was wrong.
Name of the day.
Yeah.
But you're saying fine with it for now with intent to update it with some of these other changes in the next cycle. And what Zach's saying is, this north-south road we're talking about wouldn't necessarily be part of the transportation plan anyway.
Right, 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 right.
But we should obviously incorporate.
You should have it there so people know.
Well, if you're doing the master plan, if you guys do everything south of one twenty first, you would put it in the master plan as part of a.
Call those things.
Let me ask you this. When Riverwalk came in, how did they know where our?
Tina told them.
I suppose that's kind of.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right?
Correct.
So the first development will be told that, hey, by the way, there's a little bit more than a neighborhood street on this property.
Or you have that line on there already, so that.
We did, I think it was based on the our, the topography of that property, I think is what we used, I think, from what Jason's buying them, so. But there was nothing on the transportation plan that had to go right here.
Yeah, you could have it posted in the city website. This is kind of the idea.
Yep.
And and what if they're, what if they apply like a non-PUD, we can still add that as a requirement, even though we don't have it on any plan?
So. Jason's on.
Well, it is on the plan. I'm looking at it right now.
It's on the transportation plan?
What is on the plan?
Pioneer Parkway.
It is?
I figured it would be, because it's more of a collector street that people are going to look at differently.
But one twenty, or the the one we're talking about.
Yeah, the one we're talking about now, the.
But that's not till twenty thirty, so we have time to add it later.
Yep.
We just need to.
If we sucked in any of that earlier, we'd need to be right on top of that.
And that's my concern is that.
But if we could suck something in.
We put it in the master plan, we always the master plan to refer to it's documented, which is helpful.
Okay.
I don't wanna get sidetracked, but I'm a big fan of doing things right the first time, and if you don't have to redo stuff in twenty twenty eight, all the better. I'm not advocating spending a hundred thousand dollars now, by no means, but I am advocating do it right.
Which leads me to a question. This master plan that you're talking about, is that done by city staff, or is that done?
If we had a planning department in life.
Is that hired off by some joke?
Holy mama.
What's working? Scott, if we had a community development director, that that's the skill level you would need to execute, one of those. You can't do that with a lower-level planner. So we don't have one. If we had one.
And you go with it.
Yeah, no, no masters.
No, but execute it.
Just farm out. It's all good.
Scott, we make the plan, they're the ones that execute it, and this is very complex with a lot of stuff that you need someone with experience.
I thought even maybe a road farms that out.
You can farm out that stuff. You can. Master planning, you mean?
So it'd be, you guys do that stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so. We'd be able to farm it out even if we had staff.
He came here with the idea to sell it. He sold it to us, and we just bought it. So, yes, I guarantee.
Is there a community development director and their planning commissioners and council?
As a business consultant.
Provides something very good, where we're kind of all over the board, because we don't have a community development director in our communication to landform and all.
Baseline.
Right, we need that communication person to execute.
Alls I'm gonna say is, if you give us a bill for two hundred grand, I wouldn't know how many overs you got into it before you get to.
All right, so so it sounds like we're we're in agreement that there would be a master plan south of one hundred and twenty first, including one hundred and twenty first.
Yeah, where are we going, east-west honors?
I I to me, you gotta go.
I'd stick to the twenty twenty staging.
You go to that.
Because if we go outside of it, we got issues. So that twenty twenty staging is up to the yellow cars, no, up to the.
Staging goes pretty much up to one hundred and twenty first over to.
Where the substations going?
Pretty much the sub.
One, one.
I would say all the way to Fernbrook, because part of that land is twenty thirty over there.
I would leave that out, because then we gotta deal with this north-south road.
Why? That's why you put it in.
Then we have to amend the transportation plan differently. We're gonna do the tran.
No.
You just said it was if the tran, that road was in that transportation plan.
Matt, it it is.
Oh.
I misspoke on that. I did, I I did not expect Pioneer Parkway to be in the transportation plan, but it is, so.
So the first two yellow parcels, the two forties would be.
Correct, that'd be the farthest.
Part of twenty twenty staging.
Correct.
Yep. So if you just stuck to twenty twenty staging, at least we'd have an area developed, ready to go for twenty twenty that we have, and we would not have twenty thirty.
Would, are are we, I can't imagine we're looking at any changes on the east east of that anyways.
No.
Besides the transportation one that.
Yeah, I'm, besides, forget about the road, but, I mean, right now, low-density residential, would we be, can you imagine we'd be?
I think it's fair to put it in the master plan, Dennis, only because you understand the bigger picture of what things cost and how you can maybe grade, even use advantage of topography for centralized stormwater, all that kind of stuff. If you're gonna do it, you might as well do it.
Well, how many acres is that?
Those two yellow parcels are forty each, so there's a eighty right there, so one sixty.
I would guess that's like two, two hundred?
I'd say, no, I'd say like four hundred and twenty if you go all the way to French Lake.
Which way are we going here?
From the, the, the very edge of the.
Twenty thirty land.
Nope, nope. We're kind of all the, this land, all the center.
You're just talking twenty twenty.
All the center, yep.
Probably a four hundred and sixty-ish or twenty, somewhere in there. I think there's pretty close. In twenty twenty staging, I think that's pretty close.
We want to pull in all the current stuff that's not developed. Is there any major?
That's a good point, Matt. So when you go south to one seventeenth, what do you want to include in the master plan?
Things you could.
To the west of Rayburn Trails.
I think if the focus is Dayton Parkway and the goal is to be around Dayton Parkway, the, the focus on the master plan is beyond Dayton Parkway. You can choose like, you know, it makes sense to go into the twenty twenties staging as like a set boundary, but if, if there's areas on Dayton Parkway that you want to focus on, it might make sense to go all the way down to.
But Kevin, the reason we want to pick these areas is because we know those land uses are wrong.
Right, and I, I get that. I'm saying like.
So we gotta do it anyway. We gotta figure out what the land use is gonna be.
But why would we include the twenty thirty that, that?
This isn't, where I point is not twenty thirty. This is all current.
No, that is.
Come in tomorrow with an application for gas.
I'm not at the PowerPoint room.
Yeah, I'm having to pull up the, the different maps.
I'll just pull up the one where we're side by side.
Better, yeah, that one, thank you. I think that'll make it easier to see.
See, this is why at work we limit meetings to five engineers.
I like making meetings with ten people.
I'll, I'll be in the chatroom, Dennis, but I think we're probably under five. So what I was saying is the twenty twenty on the south side there, and then like the rest of the land up that's in current, I don't, on the, not the stuff over by Fernbrook, but the stuff on the west side of town. I don't know how much that's developed or not developed.
There's homes on all of it, but they're like big lots, you know, ten, twenty-eight year lots.
If we're gonna do a master plan, we should include everything of Dayton Park, so that basically the whole west side of the current stuff should be included, in my opinion, along the Dayton Parkway. Maybe not all the way up eighty-one. I don't, I'm open, I, I have no, I have no preference on that.
Basically up to the cubes. After you get to the cubes, we're done.
Yeah, like, yeah.
Sorry? Like, all of this should be included.
Yeah, so really.
Whole area right here.
All, all we really have to deal with is this area right here, because this is already all industrial, it's not, that's cubes. All we're dealing with is this stuff right here.
And if you, but if you add in the, the large lot right there, all going down, um, French Lake to Territorial and Territorial into eighty-one.
Yeah, you could put this in there too.
Well, further south where Territorial comes into eighty-one, right there.
The yellow one?
Yep.
Yeah, I think those two are their own little separate discussion, but yeah.
Well, that's the Stensley property.
But that's the Stensley property that we.
Part of the.
We can't figure it out.
Well, we, that, and that's why I'm saying we should pull it into this because we can't, we can't figure out what we want to do with it and, and we.
Why not one-off that? So one thing I'd like about the master plan is if we ever decide to say this is what some of the infrastructure costs, and here's how it's gonna be shared, that's why you want to think about those boundaries. So if you get too far south, I, I agree with that. That needs attention, but we should probably just give it its own attention.
Well, but I, I think it plays into this because there is a good opportunity to run Territorial to the north, from there, through that property.
To one hundred and thirteen?
Yep.
Yeah, see, I was thinking the same thing. I don't know if.
And that's why I think it actually plays into this, because if you start to cut off, if you start to look at what's going on down there and you cut that territorial road off from eighty-one, you gotta get them back somewhere.
How many acres of that whole, what we have in scope be approximately? And what's, how many acres is a normal master plan when you guys do that? Is it, is it varied?
Yeah, it kind of depends, because they, they kind of, you know, every city's different, so the boundaries of like what the community has planned is usually what sets it. You know, there might be like distinct, so like Corcoran has a very distinct downtown area and they did a downtown master plan, and it was kind of like, the master plan made sense in the downtown area. That was a smaller master plan on probably a hundred acres because it was downtown oriented.
What's I'm asking, like, is a hundred the floor and like a thousand's the ceiling usually? Like, is there a range they normally tend to be or something like? We hear the whole city that way at once, not that we would, but like, you know what I mean? Like, there is no.
Yeah, so, um, let's, let me pull up and just see. I don't remember how many acres the northeast district was. I want to say it was about four fifty to five hundred ish. Um, because it was the entire northeast quadrant between, so if everybody's familiar with Corcoran, County Road thirty, one sixteen, one oh one, and then the north boundary. So all of that area within, you know, that's a si, that's a sizable chunk. I think it was probably six hundred.
Large here as we can pull in more and more and more.
Well, but it, there's a lot of.
I'm not saying we shouldn't. I'm just curious.
Yeah.
I think it makes sense.
Considering it's five bucks an acre to do a master plan.
Was it a golfing rate?
I heard it was three and a half.
Well, maybe.
Does that come with ten pounds of steak and some steak knives too, Scott?
Two fifty an acre.
Some elk steaks, there you go.
So one, I mean, maybe Kevin, you can speak too, but just so people know what the master plan process is, because all the property owners are invited to open houses, and so to the sense that you can keep it.
Cohesive.
Cohesive, perfect word, is, you know, something to consider too.
It starts to. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not unlike, you know, doing a comprehensive plan that there's still open houses, there's still public hearings. The public, every property owner gets noticed and invited.
For the correct date, correct day of the week.
Yes, yeah, always. Um, to, to provide feedback on those uses that are in there, because the master plan's gonna drill down into more, like we only show on the comprehensive plan, you've got arterials and collectors. You might get some of those more ro, local roadway networks figured out. Things like that where they're gonna want input, because it might show a road that wasn't in the comprehensive plan that goes through their property. So they want to be notified of that.
Or through their living room. It'll get to that.
So yeah, it's, it, it is a process, just like the comprehensive plan that you have to go through, where you're gonna have probably one or two open houses. You're gonna have the public hearing, probably to present the draft, and then the public hearing to present the final as well before it's adopted. And a master plan typically is adopted as an appendix to the zoning ordinance. So it would be something that would be codified at, after the.
And then it gets a big blue mark over it.
Like the north that we don't have.
Peter, when you were talking about that road off Territorial, you're talking a new road coming up off Territorial.
Yeah, I think.
What kind of, how are you envisioning that road? Is it like a?
Well, I'm, I'm almost envisioning, you know, do you, so Dayton Parkway where, where we have it coming in, and it's hard, obviously hard to see here, but where Dayton Parkway comes in and kind of starts to turn to the east, that's almost in the same spot of where the Stensley property is, and so you could have a, a T there and get rid of the, you could get rid of the French Lake as it goes north-south diagonally from one thirteenth down to Territorial.
So you're kind of thinking to that this is gonna replace the traffic that's currently using the east French Lake road to the east?
Is it gonna increase or decrease traffic in territorial in your mind?
When, when I'm thinking, it's not gonna increase it at all.
Yeah.
People from these areas here to get north are gonna come up and then come down.
Ah.
And head out.
Gotcha.
And this becomes a non-issue because we close it.
Yeah.
And we use the Stensley property to get the, the vehicles north up to where that Dayton Parkway comes through and it's the T to get us back south. And then this becomes this, this light, light purple here that it's an older industrial area. Maybe that wants to be more of a commercial area to serve the, the residential down here. That's kind of my thought in my head that I was, I've been having as I've been chewing on this. This, this roadway here, this is a, here's French Lake. French Lake makes sense right here, but as it diagonals to these properties, as we've all been talking, diagonal properties don't seem to make sense for, for development. I don't think, I don't think it's a huge deal, but you can then terminate it up here and start to do more larger. You allow, if you run in, if you're running this roadway here, you're allowing this to terminate and get rid of those diagonal properties. It solves a number of issues with eighty-one and Territorial. It's not the best access for residents to get out of this neighborhood.
As it's today.
As they're going south.
Gets bad.
As they're going south, it, it's a left, it's a, a left out, but they can take it up to a safer area and get out there, which would probably be more ideal. And I, I just, we've seen a lot of, of properties come in here that are, we've seen at least two townhomes and two apartments, I believe, come in on these properties here that want to just add more traffic to Territorial.
And my guess is, Sterns, is that property next to it is also gonna be, um.
The yellow one next to it?
Yeah.
The Pink ones?
The yellow.
Oh, the yellow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That one.
Yeah. And so I know we, I know we parched off some land here and that could still be a right in, right out, but it allows us to give a safe access back to eighty-one from the, the east, or from the west side down there.
Is, is it one thirteen? One hundred and thirteenth I thought was, was curling up into some big honkin' roundabout path Parkway.
There will be a connection.
There will be one.
Between one hundred and thirteenth and the roundabout being constructed at the cube site.
Yeah. So that, that one thirteenth will wrap around. Yep. So that would, your territorial here would connect up the back.
Could connect up the back.
Which would make sense to spill it into the roundabout.
Yeah. Doesn't make sense to run up at a, a property line. I, you know, fat markers on, on the line, on the map here, but it's just, it's an area that keeps coming up for development, and we're talking about twenty twenty and we have current that we haven't figured out yet, so if we're gonna look at a master plan, seems.
Well, it should definitely be considered. I don't know if it should be part of the master plan, but I like what you're saying, Peter.
Okay, so here we are. So it sounds like everybody's in agreement, we need a master plan, some area over there. And we know we got a mass south of one hundred and seventeenth. At least a little bit of a mass. So I don't know how many, how many, uh.
I think step one is defining the area, and it's probably not something for tonight. It's something with very specific people look at it, share their thoughts and task the planning commission with it, since we don't have anything on our agenda right now.
Just find it now. We're here, like, why not just do it now?
I don't think it's as easy to think, Matt, because you're, we're all looking at just paper.
Is, is landform gonna be doing the master plan?
Maybe.
Well, then we have to define what the goals of the master plan are too.
That's entirely.
We need to define the goals for the master plan. Because without the goals, we're just kind of, we're, we're shooting dark.
Right, we're gonna have an order in paper that's gonna be separate from us.
So we either do an RFP process or we do landform, because it's not gonna be internal staff. We don't have the capabilities or the staff levels or the, I don't know how.
Have a bunch of planning folks on YouTube?
We don't.
John, we direct the consultants, so.
Yeah, well, I'm just thinking if, if, you know, we, conceptually, we just say, okay, it's the current area, you know, current twenty twenty and the twenty forty, and just leave it as generic, and then consultant's gonna come back and say, this is what I think you should focus on.
I think we tell the consultant what you want. We tell the consultant we want and they make the pretty pictures.
Great.
Is the way I view it.
That would be correct. That's how I would do this.
You don't, you don't want an SRF tech deal where they put a line on the road. That's what we go with.
Because, because they said so. I mean, if we sat down in a planning session between all of us, we can draw lines on papers and get the stuff figured out.
Yeah.
Yeah. And move lines around where people disagree and come to an agreement. And then that's what we shove to the council, and that's what they put out on the RFP, so they understand, we've kind of defined what we want. And that consultant now bets it and says, you guys didn't think about this, and you gotta change that, and stuff like this.
Likely what it'll be is Zach will come back with something to counsel that says, here's what I think I heard at this meeting, that's the scope. Here's the boundary we're thinking, does this match what you said in your work session? And then that would then kick it off to either go out for RFP or, or with landform on that defined area, because I would recommend having that before you go out, because if there's not a defined area, it's hard to, or you propose on it.
I did. I made it to mine.
So did I.
For the master plan area.
It's got us through the lines.
Yours is the road. My, my, the only, you're taking this the next step.
I think that this is better viewed, Peter, as the study area and the master planned area becomes a component of this.
Which, which might not be defined in that.
Exactly. This is like a study area, but once we really narrow down and understand land uses, we might make sense, hey, let's put these land uses in the master plan because other things are gonna work out better that way. And, you know, the spot zone, other stuff in the study area.
But I'm okay with that.
Yeah, to me, the only thing is if we're talking about moving some of that commercial up, I think that needs to be kind of part of it too, so to me, just a little bit. The study area should be bigger, but the master plan area is very defined because we're trying to accomplish a purpose.
And you can always break out the two and do the master, sorry, do the study area with the land use and get all your land uses first, and then do the master plan, because the master plan can sometimes include rezonings, where you then make it consistent with your land use plan. So you can do those as separate efforts too, so if there's one you prefer to do now.
We're just gonna have the road. We need to have the road.
Oh, there you go.
Ryan, the only reason I, I had stopped it where I did on the north is because we've been talking about the twenty twenty area and the current area, so I was trying to stay within those boundaries.
To me, it just seems like one of the main goals of the master plan is to get this north-south route kind of finalized and put through, and like, if we don't go that far north, I feel like we're missing one vital piece of that north-south plan that we're trying to put together that's critical to everything that we're kind of doing in that area going forward. Because if Zanspar doesn't make it all the way down to the Parkway, we're, we're sitting with a big dead zone in the middle there. Part of this master plan, and this is why I want the area, the study area is perfect, but part of the master plan would be is like, okay, now we have this beautiful plan, who's gonna build Dayton Parkway? How's it gonna get paid for? And that's where the master plan can help, because some of these property owners within the master plan are gonna benefit tremendously, because nothing would happen to their property without Dayton Parkway. And so if you keep pulling the master plan too far away, now you're dealing with property owners that really don't have any boundary.
I think we need to define the road first.
Yes.
Keep the road simple. Just as easy connections you can make from current Dayton Parkway connection to the freeway up to Zanspar, one clean loop.
Yep.
Don't be cute with it.
Don't worry about East French Lake Road.
Don't worry about that, yep. And then we need to plan the corridor. And, you know, that bump out maybe around where that red area is right now, but we need to at least have a concept with the land use all the way through that whole corridor, right? We want to understand.
Yep.
What's, not, don't have to detail master plan the whole thing, but just the land use of how we want that road to be used.
Something, we assessed all those people according to that map right there.
You're gonna, mm? You just thought of that?
Which, no, I just thought that. No, I know we did it, which, which exactly proves my point. How can you assess somebody for something that aren't even there? But we did.
Look at the we thing. I didn't do anything.
Well, you, yeah. We had some pretty heated discussions.
It's crazy.
I mean, again, I don't want to spend the money now, but I think we've all recognized that we're dealing with something really bad, and we need to get it right. Because otherwise more problems and issues arise and, you know, it just, we've been dealing with it since I've been on the planning commission.
Do we have the area defined?
We haven't even talked about the historic building, but the.
I'm happy with the area with the dotted line added. I think the dotted line.
Amendment, so it has to.
Yeah, I think the dotted line makes sense because I think that's where.
There's a standard area.
Yeah, I think that's where the general land use study.
Identify the measures.
Nothing's gonna change it for years, so we just submit the plan again and say, here you go.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I understand.
Gene motion a second, Dennis?
I think Zach and I want a clarification on a couple things.
That's the, uh, that's the road.
Well, they put the road on that one.
Make it easy.
Yeah, it's on it.
Is it a terminate right in front of Grove?
You're saying a little bit? I, you won't get any pushback from me, I.
The truth comes out.
No, it's, it's, it has nothing to do with that. No, I, I just, I think we have a set of homes along there that might not go away anytime soon.
I agree.
We should address this before.
Is there consensus on the area? Like, where are we going next?
Yeah, we need to have. You guys got questions for us? Yeah, we have questions because you guys talk and then it's like, oh, it's changed in a matter of five minutes, so.
Go ahead, Kevin, go ahead, Kevin.
So I think Zach and I from Phillips have got three, there's three critical or large steps right now. One is finishing up the transportation plan amendment for Dayton Parkway. Then you move into the study area for the land use changes, and that is one separate work effort. And then there's a smaller defined master plan area that is to be determined within that study area. That would be that final step that would kind of envision the Dayton Parkway as a whole in more specific terms. Is it kinda where we're at?
We deal with the staging plan impacts as part of one of those efforts, the master planning, maybe, I don't know. But it seems like we're.
I think in order to do, in order to do the master plan and accomplish the goals we're trying to get to, we're gonna have to adjust some of the staging.
We have to, because we can't build Dayton Parkway to nowhere.
Well, and we can't build, we can't finish connecting Dayton Parkway to Zanzibar with twenty forty land sitting in the middle.
Right, you're not gonna build the first phase, and that's the other question, is what's the first phase of Dayton Parkway, which could be figured out with the. Transportation plan, I mean, the transportation plan has all this stuff in it about roads and timing, and we're not touching that right now, I'm assuming. But we need to, because we can't, we can't master plan this twenty twenty, build a road and just stop it there and be. Talk in ten years.
Especially when we just paved a road coming from the other way right down to it and then stopping so they can stare at each other.
Not to say that, even if we master plan, not saying it's gonna happen right away, it's not, but it has the potential.
Fifteen years, and this is one of my other problems with the alignment is, it's going through a very expensive home.
I'm not, Dennis, I think we could talk about a lot of property owners' impact and it's hard. I think the discussion's better to stay what we think is best on the alignment, I get it, I mean, it sucks. Whether it's an expensive home or cheap home, it sucks, but.
The problem is that it puts a road block. There it can.
I mean, it can, it can stop it if that guy doesn't sell.
There's a lot of people that I want nothing to do with Dayton in fifteen years if it keeps.
Yeah, yeah.
Just that simple, we're changing.
Or, or if that individual, God forbid.
I just, Dennis, someone's gonna have to buy him, and it's us or the county or whoever our partners are on this project, so.
Why we didn't.
Somebody sixty-five, they may not be here.
Well, I, I agree with Dennis on this one, we, as we're looking at this, we need to look at the opportunity to, to look at greenfields to shift roadways. Even if we just build.
There's ag land, five hundred feet to the, to the west.
I, I don't think we should preclude it, because. Yeah, there's, there's exactly that and there's, you know, taking out existing homes is one of those that. Even, you know, even if they, we can do it, is it the right thing to do? Or is it, is the right thing to do to realign it to make it more what Paul drew here versus what's actually out there?
Well, my experience, Peter, is that if you got a million dollar home right now in Dayton, where this Dayton Parkway's coming through, when Dayton Parkway comes through. You want out of there, you wanna be bought, I get it, we have to buy them out, I get it, but they want to be bought out so bad, because they want nothing to do next to being a zero.
I'm not talking about the, the type of home or the size of home, I'm talking about the roadway alignment and what it's gonna do. Because the roadway alignment is taking out a lot more property than one home.
Yeah, I think the roadway alignment needs to be focused on how to make efficient use of land the most. And then when you get it figured out, maybe if you could shift it a few feet, I'm not, or a hundred feet, five hundred feet, whatever, I'm not against that. Avoid a home, but I'm telling you, these homes don't wanna be there when the road comes, they don't.
We're talking at this planning level about five hundred feet worth of movement, and that's not where this is, this is still just markers on a piece of paper. When we get into the point of focusing on the study area and focusing on the master plan, that's where this detail needs to come back up, so we probably could push part of that down. Because that, this road is gonna probably adjust a little as we go through that area. And that's the point to take in those considerations of like this one expensive home that's in the way, we're still talking at the city level here, we need to get that, that conversation narrowed down. Before we start kind of focusing on those, I don't wanna call them minutia. Realistically, like that's, it feels too tight for this point of the conversation still.
Okay, so my question was, are we including the staging plan as part of our progression?
So the staging would follow with this, with the study area, with the land use changes, that's the, the logical way to move about that. So when you're talking about land use, you can also talk about staging and see if we're shifting.
But we're still doing comp plan amendment if you do that.
Correct.
No matter what we do. This is going to take eighteen to twenty-four months to do this process.
Which is why we're gonna do it right, I keep trying, that's why I keep trying to say, don't discount just trying to shove something.
That's why I'm trying, I'm just trying to make sure everyone understands here that anything we do here, these master plan studies, and, and I'm not disagreeing with it that they're wrong. Whatever, they were done incorrectly, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that any of these processes that we do is going to be an eighteen to twenty-four month endeavor, with us restarting the process in a year after that.
Well, hang on, but, hang on, are we really restarting the process, because if we really get this narrowed down in the first next couple of years, do we not just resubmit the same plan to that a year later?
We still have to do the whole process again, as in like, all the open houses and all the other stuff that we have to do, we can't, we can't just say, oh, yeah.
Do we, do we hold open houses if we're not making any changes, so we hit the ten-year mark?
We have to.
We still have to.
And even when you're holding those open houses, the big difference is if you're not making any changes, it's staff presenting, it's not the consultant.
Right.
Correct, yep.
Yeah.
You already have it figured out.
I just wanna make sure that everyone's aware.
It's a big step no matter what, so I guess the question is if we didn't do anything, back to, we have a nightmare right now at one seventeenth with land uses. And your six-month moratorium.
Well, it's.
That's the whole issue here, is we have a nightmare at one seventeenth, because, because Dayton Parkway shifted, not anything else, it shifted to the west.
You're talking one seventeenth of Dayton Parkway, right?
Yeah, it shifted to the west compared to what's on this plan.
I mean, the whole area in that, that we just traced out is.
Yeah.
Is a mess.
Yeah. So we gotta start, the question is how big.
I'm not disagreeing with that aspect.
Right, you're saying there's extra cost, there's extra work that goes into it, but then there's also extra risk if we just kick this can down the road three years too. Of this area developing to something that we now have no option to go through and fix later, or at least it becomes noticeably more complex to fix later on down the road.
Minus the fact that it's still not in current staging, this is twenty twenty staging still.
And there's plenty, well, I shouldn't say plenty, but there's land in current staging that could become a gas station tomorrow legally with our comp plan.
Correct, I'm not disagreeing with that.
I'm not saying that's gonna happen, but there's land there that that's what it's guided for, I'm not saying, maybe it's a good use even, but.
Anything north of one seventeenth is considered twenty twenty land and not considered current, don't ask me why, how or whatnot.
No, but there is, I mean, there is.
There is.
South of one seventeen.
South of one seventeen, there is one hundred percent.
In our first application, if somebody comes that's with something in twenty twenty, we have to deal with it, so. We can't just say, oh, we're not ready, we have to deal with it, say why we're not ready or we face lawsuits.
Not in current staging. Not in current staging, because it's not until twenty twenty nine.
You're gonna, I'm not saying it's gonna go anywhere, but then you get the letter from the attorney and housing first and blah, blah, blah.
What's new, we've already been done this road before.
Right, but we don't have as much, I would rather be on their side of that case when it's in twenty twenty and it's the year twenty twenty-three. Than our side of the case, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, I mean, half the reason we're sitting here is because we have pushed this stuff out. I mean, people said, well, we'll leave the X on, on there because, you know, it's, it's twenty years down the road. Well, we keep doing that and we're gonna keep, I mean, up right where we are, so we shouldn't be afraid of the process just because it's gonna take us a year and a half. I mean, if that's what it's gonna take, that's what it's gonna take, but we have to do it sometime.
Again, I'm not trying to push back at anybody, I just.
I think a question to council is, and I, I'm not asked, expecting any of you to answer right this second, but. Do you guys wanna do the full-blown thing, it's a big number we've heard, or do you want, because ultimately it's gonna come down to, you know, where you guys feel comfortable and. What amount of money we should spend.
Well, I think there are other changes, I'd like to see, the problem is, I don't know whether it's worth pulling that ahead time once. I mean, I, I would, I would like to see more commercial areas scattered, little ones, but I don't know, is that something?
We don't have roads, if we had roads, we'd do it.
We need roads and sewer water.
Well, I mean, not necessarily, we do have, we do have some roads, but I, I'm just saying. You know, we, we have, for instance, we have some, some areas on, on Brockton that, well, they were incorrectly. Have we ever figured out what happened with that, did the letters get sent out, so there was some twenty thirty properties on Brockton that were medium density. They magically became low density at the last update, so there may be some areas there that could be commercial. Maybe on Fernbrook, maybe, you know, on other roads, I'm, I'm not talking about a Walmart, I'm talking about.
Yeah, convenience stores.
But how do we make that happen? I don't, maybe we wait till.
I think spot, I think you can make that happen, Dennis, by spot zoning, I think the question would be with. If we had a community development director, one thing that they'd be tasked with is going to the market, a quick trip, holiday and say, hey, if we put this land in Brockton. And Dayton River Road, if we zoned it and guided it so you could put a convenience store, would you even do it? That'd be step one, if they said yes, then you go to the property owners and you can spot zone it and be done with it, and you have what you want.
That can be done anytime.
Yeah, that can be done anytime.
So how do we? And we have no problem rezoning something that's not for the land, for the land use?
You'd have them in the comp plan, it was consistent, but that's just, that's just a one-off.
And what's the ballpark number for this?
I think the staging plan will need to update at some point in time, a hundred percent, to get back to your question, I agree with you a hundred percent. I think if we're gonna choose to grow from the south to the north, we've landed the north, that then is improperly staged as well, that's gonna need addressing. So I think you have to look at the whole thing, I don't know if it needs to be changed at this exact moment, just because of the areas that we're looking at for the study. But I agree, it needs to be changed.
Four times as great.
And if we're trying to avoid a six-figure price tag, waiting two and a half years to change it, I don't think it's gonna make a whole bunch of difference, because it's not in current. It's in twenty twenty, so we could go on the same route we went down before.
The most important thing to me is choosing your right partners, so whoever we choose now to do this master plan. Are the people we use when we update our comp plan, because you keep changing consultants too, that's when it gets expensive too.
Okay.
And what was the community developer update? We talked about, we talked about planning updates the other day.
Yep, there'll be one on the next agenda, you'll see, we'd like to postroll.
Aye.
Don't imply, Dan, we don't stop you.
No, not aye, more like, are we voting?
Oh, gotcha. Good try.
Okay, so, master plan.
So yeah, what we need to make sure we have, we have the transportation plan that we're currently doing, are we adjusting any of those, I think just three quarters of them. Are we adjusting the transportation plan that we're currently doing? Got a note from one, staying, staying the same.
Sounds like it's painful to change that.
It's gonna be, it, we're gonna restart the whole process, so whenever we started it back in February, we'd have to restart the whole process.
An imaginary line on there that we think is going to happen.
In your brain or on the paper?
On the paper.
Which paper?
You gotta put it down.
I think Zach, Zach, if you, what you're saying is what you've presented.
Yes.
Which has no one twenty ninth, no other road.
Nope.
That's what we have to stick to, otherwise we have to start over.
Correct.
Yeah, so, Scott, we have, the imaginary line is in your head and in our study areas, and keep in mind that it's outside of current staging.
That's correct.
So we don't have to worry about development risk of someone coming in there and saying, we're gonna do it, and we're in trouble.
At least not in the next couple of years before we take out the whole plan anyway.
Okay.
So.
So check mark, we're good on that, can we move forward with that?
Okay.
My answer is, yeah, proceed with.
Proceed with plan, okay, perfect, next there was study area, we have a. Proposed area and then amended with more stuff or towards Zanzibar, basically concentrated on twenty twenty land in the center. Down to current, on the bottom, towards the Stemsley property, and then extending north, basically just south of the future one twenty ninth. On focused around Zanzibar and the Parkway, we want to do a study area, and that would be land use only.
I would go all the way up to the park, I'd only see your line stop, because if.
That's on my line, I don't know.
Yeah, whoever's line, because if one twenty ninth comes across, you might as well go up to the park.
Sure.
And I would, I would say go to, go to French Lake too. Because you're, that's a pretty narrow area between our study area and French Lake.
Saying, and I'm just gonna hold this up.
Just for the study area, not the master plan.
Basically straight would be.
To French Lake, because it's a narrow area, we should have that figured out without, without.
That other medium density area.
All included, basically including the straight medium density.
Not single family.
Yep.
Yep. Except for it would go up one, you're talking to go one up four, one forty parcel and over.
Yeah, all the way over, yep. Just for the study area, the master plan on.
Study area would then be this area that's been twenty twenty.
Master plan.
That's master plan.
Nope, yeah, this is master plan area.
Yep, you're doing it backwards.
This is study area totally all the way French Lake, including everything, we do everything at one time.
Yeah.
And then master plan.
I would assume the master plan gets like finally determined out of the study.
Are we just, I mean, with the master plan, I'm pretty guessing, assuming like ghost planning, but the question is, like, where is the market? So, you know, we've talked about, is, are we looking at warehouses or are we looking at smaller manufacturing buildings?
That'd be the question, I don't, I didn't get a concrete answer if people even wanna explore more industrial. So I think that if you guys are gonna task the planning commission, council that is, to start maybe some of this process, it'd be good to hear your feedback. If we should even consider industrial, because otherwise, if you guys are saying no, why would we consider it, we'd just work with what we got.
If, if industrial were to go on the table, where would we consider it?
I'd say west of Dayton Parkway up to French Lake in that area.
To me, like coming up the, what's that thing? Side of French Lake.
Yeah, on the lake, it's already on the lake on the other side.
So you're taking all of those millions out of there.
They are gonna sell their homes someday when they want to, so I'm not doing it, if they don't want to, they won't sell their own.
Yeah, and I don't, I know we did that on the, on the west side, I just, it's, to me, it seems silly to put industry on a lake, but.
We already did it on the other side of the lake.
I know we did.
And there, and by the way, when you're standing at Leo's property, looking across the lake, guess what you see?
Industrial.
All the industrial, and so you could carve out a nice park path along the lake, so I'm not saying put industrial up to the lake. You could carve out a path, park and everything coming up along the lake.
So it's a question, what is the highest and best use, and I guess to me it seems more residential rather than industrial, but if we put residential there, we're saying no to industrial.
I don't know what you mean by highest and best use, you want more bang for your tax buck, industrial, so I guess it depends on what you mean by that.
But industry doesn't care if it's on a lake.
No, they don't, actually corporate headquarters, it's a little bit more, Graco toes on site for a reason, and so I'm not, if I put industrial there, the last thing I'd want is another Cubes there. I'd want more Gracos.
The, the other issue is if we do make a bunch of that industrial, now we're offsetting our density calculation a little bit too, because we're taking medium back out, so is there gonna be?
We're just shifting it, I wouldn't say we're taking it out, we're just shifting it.
Shifting it to where though? Well, we, that's, that's what I'm saying, we have to set up.
We'd figure that out and we'd figure a little bit out, fifteen to twenty.
Just throw in a five hundred unit apartment building and you're good.
Change the fifteen to twenty, and that solves a lot of it, and the reality is it might be closer to twenty-five to begin with.
The fifteen to twenty, the, the twenty thing is, that's a good idea, I like that.
Yeah, you can do four-star with one level underground parking at thirty, thirty-five units an acre all day long, but you lose green space, so you have to think about your impervious surface and all this kinda stuff.
Okay, so the master plan.
Depends on what you want.
You have, you know, phase one is residential, or option A, residential, option B is something else.
We could do options, but I guess I'm looking to save the planning commission's time, is if the council has a strong opinion, they tell us to consider two or three options. Because, and I guess I wouldn't rather, I wouldn't wanna spend a bunch of time doing it, and you're like, we don't want industrial.
Yeah, I.
We got enough warehouse that does.
Well, and, I mean, really, the whole focus of this is on.
Don't think warehouse though, Scott.
What's that?
He said we got enough warehouse, I said, I, I won't think warehouse here, I'd be thinking what's along on six ten, that's not a warehouse.
I mean, you've got a, there's a medical manufacturer, right, there's cadres right there, like, I think there are.
So there's, I, I would agree with you, no warehouse distribution if we did it.
So we kinda create a new, we'd have to.
Put us, put us mixed use, it could be used for every.
No, so we have a business park classification, it's so poorly written, it's the same as our industrial, and that's when we were going through the zoning code. We tried to maybe hit it, but then we realized if we hit it, we have to do our whole comp plan amendment, because we have all this land-guided BP that basically it's. And then plus, our zoning department, when you came in and land was, if land was guided industrial, you could choose. Between BP, I one or I two, it's like, why do we have these choices, especially when one's heavy and one's, it's like, no, we should be a little more focused. So is there consensus on business park, industrial?
Business park, apartment, big apartment, office, office building, that type of stuff.
Not a distribution center.
Not distribution.
Not, not warehouse, I think, you know, industrial, if we can find a place that it makes sense to have more of it, I think we should.
Well, that's the best place to have it, if you're gonna have it, is right in that area, because it's all gonna wanna be right off of the interchange.
I still like that we got a few lakes right there and there's still an opportunity to put some residence around some of those if we're not gonna make it accessible some other way. With some strip of parkland around it or something as well, because again, I just feel like it's one of our natural amenities that we're just kind of writing off altogether.
Right on that big hill, northeast one.
Does the Diamond Lake Regional Trail come down the east side or the west side of French Lake?
West.
What is it? West side.
Is there a trail envisioned on the east side in our plan?
I think there was.
I think there was.
There was something, I don't know if it's in our plan, there, there is something that does show it's not the regional trail, but a looping trail around the other side of the lake as well. But I, I don't remember if that's in the plan or if that was just in some.
As I recall, it was the lightest.
Lightest of lines?
Yeah, I mean, there's.
Was it dotted line?
If this is gonna be an area of density and commercial in general, because it's not super far between Dayton Parkway and French Lake. You're probably not gonna have a lot of low, low-density residential that say, you know, this is some super amenity. But that doesn't mean you can't have some phenomenal apartment buildings mixed in with some business park, office users, whatever.
I mean, you look at what's going off of the south side of six, I mean, you've got the Target corporate headquarters, and now you've got that, like, new apartment building complex that popped up there.
Six ten apartments?
If you work at Target, that's a great place to live, because you can literally walk there year-round, it's so close, I feel like having.
Coming right to it.
So I, I feel like having that same kinda thing on the lake isn't a bad idea.
Okay.
That's my thought on. So business park.
And as soon as we tweak the business park.
To be actual business park.
To be, not a lot of warehouse, distribution, big, big bulk.
There's one.
Hopefully Kevin's got it.
There's two notes.
If they're on paper, I lose them.
And then we decided that we're doing a master plan?
Yes.
Yes.
We're gonna do that. And we're gonna focus it on the 2020 area and current area. Correct.
Along the Dayton Parkway.
Well, I thought-
I'm, I'm assuming that would be fluid based again off of the, the study area, because if we decide that-
So we will do a study area first.
Yep.
That'll be the process to do the study area first, kinda get something down and figure out if we wanna move forward with the master plan thing. And then if we do, it's a, yep, that's what we wanna do, because we did the study area, then we will move forward with the master plan, um, which will be fluid again, and going through that process.
So, yes, to the master plan, but I think that, and current and 2020 have to be our priorities, but I wouldn't exclude anything outside of that. You know, as, I mean, I think we let the study define the master plan
Sure.
area, and it could include some 2030.
Well, there's a 240 junk right in the middle of it that almost has to, almost has to get reassigned earlier in order to finish connecting the-
Doing something that makes sense. So we let the study drive, help us define the, the actual master planning area.
Yeah, and the master plan wouldn't happen until the 2025 or so, based on the, the study area land use changes. So you'd have time to, you know, once you're analyzing that, refine the scope and what you wanna do with that master plan.
It would take that long to get it done?
To do the, the land use changes, yeah. With, well, you have to get the transportation plan amendment through first, then begin the land use, study area changes, and talk about all that and do the process for that and get it approved. And we're already halfway through 2023, so I'm saying like start of 2025 is rough.
This is why we gotta get started now on it.
And there's a moratorium for all of that time?
No. Currently for six months of September.
No, 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 a new one right off the bat. I mean, you don't, if, if you're gonna do this, if you're gonna do this plan, you don't, you don't want anybody coming in there and saying, hey, I'm gonna do this because that's what's on your plan now.
Something to consider with the study area, when you kick off the land use changes in the study area, is to say, do, like, that would be a consideration when you start that process. Do we wanna go into a moratorium for, and it would be the exact area defined on the map here, the study area, and say we're gonna go into a moratorium while we're doing the land use changes as part of this.
When does the current moratorium expire?
September 14th.
So we got till September-ish to get our study area well defined and our master plan well defined. That way you know if you need to, what you need to maybe do with the-
Not the master.
Well, the area, not figure it out, but master plan area kinda roughly figured out.
Not the master plan, but the boundaries.
Yeah, so that way you know what you might have to do or not have to do with the.
You probably don't have to have the area figured out, because you wanna do the land use changes first, and maybe you decide something during that process that would modify the boundary. Because you wouldn't actually, I mean, you wouldn't-
Right, I'm, I'm not saying exactly, I'm more saying compared to the moratorium boundary, like, okay, where, where do we have any issues of any?
Yeah.
Or can we shrink the current moratorium boundary to be more specific to where we're-
Well, you don't wanna wait on the moratorium for the, for the master plan anyways, because-
They covered that area.
Well, because you only have a one-year limit on a moratorium. So if you do it for the study area, you'd have to come out of it and then do it a separate moratorium for that master plan. Just because of statute, it's only allowing you to go for a year.
The good news is I don't think we're gonna upset too many people, because most just can't happen till Dayton Parkway is constructed, so I wouldn't get too focused on it, just more the one offs that could maybe happen along 117th that we're not ready for.
So is my land in current included in your, in your, uh, master plan or your study area?
Yes.
Not, no, not your-
These two lots are his.
Which two?
Oh, they're your, um, the, where the, where the-
The two yellow 40s are yours.
The two yellow 40s, but the not one.
That's current.
No, no.
No, not the current stuff, just the 2020 stuff.
Just point guard.
Yeah, just 2020 stuff.
Thank you.
Okay. Have we hammered it out enough?
Hope you got good notes.
Okay, so different question. What do we do about this giant teal area to the north?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Okay.
So if something came in, the idea would be either, we have the same debate we had last time, and we amend the land use plan if we don't think it's a big deal. But I guess it really depends on what's planned and how it's tied into Riverwalk, I guess, right? Because that would be fair to say.
I, I really don't wanna be dumping more traffic.
I'm more only talking about the one chunk that's in 2020 that remains, not the rest.
Just the one eastern rose, north, south, east, right?
In order to take it out.
Dennis, I've heard you and I've heard me say, don't worry about property owners, but I'm all for throwing someone a bone if they really want to take down a fifth of their property, like Randy maybe want to, or may, I don't know exactly, but I'd hate, because it's already been in 2020 forever, I'd hate to see someone take that out on them. That's just my opinion, because, you know, there's a lot of chunk of money tied up in there, and it's been in 2020 for a while, so.
Not very long.
I don't, yeah, maybe not, but that's just my take on it. And I've heard a lot of you guys looking out for property owners, and I just wanted to throw that in.
At this point, we would, I don't know what you'd wanna do, because it's a master planned area, so.
I was gonna say, last time we, we switched, we pulled down 100 acres and made it. It pulled out of the master plan area.
Put it low density.
We just made it low density.
I, I feel like it's better to do that now, because we got our hands full on the south end. Because if we did anything with it, then we have to recalculate all these density.
And I don't understand why we talk-
Well, the problem is, is that, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, why we picked back 500 acres, followed by that?
Oh, I know why. I, I don't know, I don't know why you chose to follow through with it, but it was because-
Ramsey had a proposed deal on there.
Yeah, Gagne Development had the whole thing, and they started an A U A R on it, the whole thing, and then walked away. Because it was, it was just too complicated.
Well, my concern is, is that, that area is four and a half, it's calculated four and a half units per acre.
Yeah.
And low density is calculated, what, three?
So-
Two?
To alleviate your concern, Matt, on the west end of that, if, that's where they're guiding, because that's where Dayton Parkway comes with Dayton River Road, that's where they're planning apartments. So I don't think we're gonna have a problem meeting the four and a half in that area, in the big picture. In fact, I think it'll be more, because if you put apartments up there.
I think what Matt's saying is, are we gonna change the land use on that property, which is-
Not currently.
Correct, that's what, that's what.
Because then we'd have to re-spot zone everything and go through all the density kept, well, that's my take, is we got our hands full down south, because I'd stay there.
Okay.
And, yeah, and right now, they can't, I don't think they can meet the, the land use anyways, right? It's master, it's, the whole area is master planned, they'd have to get approval to rezone to-
They'd just like Riverwalk, they'd have to come in for a comp plan amendment and-
So this is going to go to the planning commission, so I wanna make sure this is gonna, study area is gonna go to the planning commission, they have the direction from the council, and then come to the council for approval, and then move forward with master plan, yes. So I'm here.
So we're gonna wait a month before we see this? Because the next, you guys meet once a month, right?
I don't even know, we'll do it on June. Do you know how many things are on June so far for planning commission?
I know, cool.
Good luck getting on June, there's four or five things on June planning commission meeting, so.
Um, Peter, do you feel like this initial discussion is better for a work session or an actual planning commission meeting? I kinda feel like it's better in a work session, a little more informal, but I don't know. And we're trying to figure out things.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I think a, a work session would be okay. I just-
I think my concern is, is it gonna take a while to get all this done? And so the longer we wait to get it in front of people that actually basically officially vote on what we talked about tonight, is just gonna delay the inevitable. Most of, there's a lot that has to, we're just voting on the study area, right? Isn't that the idea?
That is correct.
And we've all agreed to it here tonight, for the most part, right? So I think-
Well, yeah, there might be some gotchas.
Yeah, but my, my point is, is like, they're not gonna meet-
Is it enough for a whole work session, or is it enough where we could probably take it on during the course of planning meeting and just get it done?
But the, but the next planning commission meeting is next, next month.
That's what Zach is saying.
So we got more items, we haven't experienced this yet, but sometimes those four items.
I didn't take it, talk to Zach, that is correct.
I think a work session, and this is-
Well, that's, we're gonna lose a month of the way, of the time, just because we have a meeting.
Make a motion to approve it.
I think a work session would be good, because then we can carve out our areas, come up with our options, and then go, do what, redefine the- No, no, not the area, but talk about these land uses. Put little drawings on paper, like, this would become business park, here's Dayton Parkway. And understand working, the density impact calculations, so what-
Here's what we're gonna do. Can you send out the rough study area to us in a, in a, uh, black and white? Get your colored pencils, come to the next planning commission meeting.
Just like I said.
With each of yours, what you guys think, we can talk about it for a little bit at the next one and see if we need further direction.
Our last chair never-
Yeah, the one thing I'd want is, I wanna understand the density that our current comp plan is reflecting.
Yep.
And so as we start changing stuff around, we need to understand, are we creating other issues for us that we need to steal land? Or, or maybe we created, there's enough density already, we don't have to worry about it.
Do you want to send the table out then?
What's that?
The table for medium densities that you're looking at?
No, the table in the comp plan that breaks down the areas for our 3.2 is our study area, what density is in that right now? Is it 2,000 units, 1,500 units? But when we come up with a couple of options, we need to know an idea of what that density is, because if we go way under it, we just created a problem somewhere else that we have to deal with. So I'd, I'd rather have that fact flushed out right away.
Otherwise, we end up with what happened over there with that random medium density.
Right.
Yeah, I get what you're saying, so you're asking what the density is right now in that study area?
On our comp plan, yes.
Yep. Okay.
And my suggestion was for a work session was largely because it sounds like we have a full schedule.
We have a full agenda, but if Matt wants us to move forward quicker, this is, let's do, let's do some homework and-
We, you can do a whole month. Again, if, if all we're doing is defining what the area is, I mean, how much more do we need to really put into defining what?
Defining the land uses in there.
The area is defined.
I thought this was to generate a head start for, for the consultant.
Yeah, yeah. The land uses and-
Not necessarily just the-
Yeah, okay, yeah, if we're, if we're doing more than just the boundary, then I-
The boundary is already defined, so we did know, we have noted the boundary. Basically is the, I would say, 140 acre parcel to the east of Zanzibar, straight down, and then in 2020 space, current spacing, and then French Lake on the, on your technical west boundary.
Yeah, I just, that's all we were going for, but we're gonna talk about actual guidance, yeah, but.
I think it's easier to flush out everything north of 117th and how we want it, Peter. I think where we could spend way too much time is figuring out everything south of 117th. Because there's a bunch of existing uses and it does matter.
So you're suggesting workshop?
I'm not, I'm open to what, I, I think it's gonna be way easier to figure out north of 117th, because it's different than what's south of 117th. And you have to be a little bit more sensitive, that if we're gonna pull territorial up, stuff like that, there's just a lot more going on.
There's a lot more dynamics there.
That personally, to walk into a meeting, what would make, make this happen in our meeting is if we have better prep documents beforehand. So I don't know what you guys need, but I know sometimes when I get the prep documents, I feel like we're just scratching the surface of what we need to talk about. And so the more was in the prep documents would get us a lot further in our meeting faster.
What do you mean prep documents? What are you looking for?
Uh, no different than the packet for this, the packet for tonight's meeting, all we had discussion on was rural state, that's it.
Yep.
We had no discussion on this. So, and that's what I'm asking you guys, is what more information do you need so you have these prep packets? And like, that's why I gave you the density thing, that's why I'm bringing up this road, that's why I want, if we're gonna do this, we need to know the transportation plan that you think is gonna get approved. We can't, you know, we need to know this stuff.
So I think the first thing is that, once you have the study area defined, you know,
Which we have.
Yeah. To move on to the land use changes, that's something you wanna do once you've selected a consultant. Like, I don't, I don't know if you guys are gonna choose to go for RFP for this, or if you're gonna use, use land form, but you probably wanna have that defined first before you start talking about the land use changes. Because if you, if the person you're using as the consultant isn't there, it doesn't, like, they don't, it's gonna be a step too quick, because they're gonna wanna be there for the conversation you have. Does that make sense? So like, that, that meeting, that work session, to go over the land use with the, you know, coloring in the, the white parcels with the proposed land uses, that would be like the first meeting you would do after you've established what your scope of work is.
Meeting, that was gonna be a lot of teetering around.
I think, I think we can do them simultaneous. I think, I think we can have a discussion at the planning of what we, of what our rough estimates are.
Your vision.
Our vision.
Mm-hmm.
While council is selecting a consultant to move forward before we, and this is why Darren, I, I don't really care at this first meeting. I get what you're saying, because this is your wheelhouse of where the, the land use changes outside of this. That's the consultant's job, in my mind, is to show us the impacts. Our, our job, uh, is to kinda more massage it, and this is kinda what we'd like to see along Dayton Parkway here. You know, we would like to see the, the business park, or the commercial, or the, the apartments. That's kinda what I'm thinking we do in the meantime, while everyone else figures out how to get a consultant on board, and then let them start doing the calcs and run with it. Because that also plays into what Kevin's saying, is then, we're not having a conversation, we're just having an idea and prepared to talk to the consultant, but not having a, a path forward for him. We know we want a blue, we just don't know what shade.
Yeah, that's pretty much what I was thinking, just because that first packet, you wanna know in your conversations, what is possible, you know, if you're, if you're, if it currently is shown as 5,000 units in that area, and because of your density at 3.2, you can only drop to 3.0, that means you can go from 5,000 down to 4,200 units. That's, then you have an idea of what that range is that you can play with, kind of, or you can go above that, obviously. But then you have some ideas to make an informed discussion, because it might, you might wanna do, you know, 50 acres of high-density residential instead of 200, but that drops you too low, so you know you've gotta keep at least these four parcels, and I'm just speaking hypotheticals here, above, so you're, you're able to have an informed discussion. And that's part of that material is where we bring to you, so you can have an informed discussion. This one was very open-ended, I did not include a lot on purpose, because I wanted to have a broad discussion and not focus on one specific area. So I think that would be important to have as that first meeting. And I think Zach needs to figure out whether you wanna select a consultant from an RFP pool, or you wanna go out for RFP? Because that's a, that's a process when you go out for an RFP, because it takes, you know, for posting and getting proposed, that's a two-month process to do all that before you select one. So I just don't want you to go ahead and have too many conversations about it without the right person on board to, to hear that discussion.
Do we just have that discussion at a council meeting? I mean, whether, you know, whether we're going.
We can, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
We have that, have that watch to go out for an RFP, or if we want to just contract with landform. I mean, can't we make that decision independent of, of these other things happening?
Yep.
Yep, yeah.
So you could have that discussion before it goes back to planning commission. Maybe that works better because of how full the June fourth meeting is, or June first.
Don't get the day wrong.
That's what I get for trying to say it off the top of my head, is that you could, you could have that at council at the next meeting, and that would be before the next planning commission meeting. And so you could, if you decide not to go out for RFP, you could move forward with it at the next planning commission.
Yeah, I think either way, it makes sense for you guys to hammer out.
Right.
What it's.
Some of it details. Hammer out at least. Yeah.
I want to hammer it black and white. I do, just for fun.
Want to color it in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Red light, green light.
I'll get you, I'll get your red light, green light.
So it's just a matter of, you do a work session ahead of your next meeting, or you guys.
If I'm gonna be pig green, Scott.
It sounds like, yeah, it sounds like, I mean, I get Matt, I, I'd love to get it done before the next meeting, but it doesn't sound like there's an urgency to even get it done before the next meeting from my standpoint of everything that's gotta happen. It sounds like we usually got two months before a consultant's even on board.
Yeah.
It's all for sure.
For sure.
If you go out for RFP, for sure. If the council says no, we're just gonna use landform, which is fine, yeah, whatever, it's on, it's on a beam.
If he, if he would say five or ten bucks an acre, we'd do it right now.
Well, if we get, like I said, I can ask for proposal from landform either which way, and then if that's, works well with the council, great, that's good with us. And then we can go forward with it if you want to do a work session prior to your June meeting or have us, I don't even know, I think you can have a separate second meeting, I think, work session.
I mean, we could, well.
You could pose a special, you could pose a special meeting.
You know, some cities, some cities do two meetings in March.
Yeah, I'm okay trying to tackle it at the next meeting, and if we don't give it the attention it needs, because the other four items.
We just gotta not talk so much about the other four items.
That's a good point.
I only talk about land use a lot.
What are you guys doing this?
It's him.
That's right.
There's probably none of them.
Nope, there's not.
You good?
I got, I'm gonna send out some red light, green lights, so I'm sending out, but I got it, I got it.
I'm gonna use these same.
I can do some density studies.
Same color. So maybe I could be, maybe I could change, be a planner.
You can apply, Scott.
It's all, all it takes, just coloring it in. I'm working more than three or four days.
Okay, so you're gonna just tack this on your next meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
Best of luck. I guess it's gonna be a special meeting, is my guess. Just fine.
Like crazy topics, or is it pretty straightforward?
It all depends on if it actually go, I mean, like Jason and I, we talked, so, there's this shiny property that came in. I don't even know if that'll actually be.
That would be simple, we can figure that out. There's nothing to talk about. I think we realized that last time. There's nothing to talk about, so let's not talk about it.
You talk about it, but.
It's a full preliminary plat. That's why I say it's.
With no, with no dirt, we're covering up dirt.
Okay, well, the, the point is, I don't know exactly which of all, because we just got them in on May first, they have to be complete.
Yeah.
Applications before I know if they're gonna be in June. So I'm just letting you know, there's a possibility of being four items on June. Might be, maybe what?
Might be two.
Yeah, that's, it could be two or three, if one of those isn't complete, so.
Where are the, the other three?
You get the public hearing on the transportation plan?
Okay.
And then.
Um.
Fisher Farms.
Fisher Farms, Event Center, Ordinance Amendment and I U P.
And then something variance, right, thirteen hundred?
Thirteen, yeah, it's a variance for a accessory structure.
Yeah.
That's about five minutes.
And then.
Sure.
Have you watched our meetings?
Have you, have you watched?
How long was last?
You guys can make five minutes.
It was pretty good.
I've never watched it before, but I forgot how long it was.
I.
What was that? It was, it was till nine. So they went to nine even without me, so don't blame me.
Is, is the variance straightforward?
Uh, I haven't, I have to look at it to know exactly how the part was intended to that man did a little bit. It's on the setback conversation, yeah, so.
That's easier.
Uh, and then Zeigler, Zeigler Trucking has a rezoning on a site plan.
Okay, so it could be five. On their existing one?
Uh, the site adjacent to their.
Oh, they bought K Jason site?
Yeah.
Nice. Um, this is just off topic, and I don't expect a lot of discussion, but, you know, there's a lot of changing going on in every industry, including the auto auction industry. There's, you know, people talked about commercial, but if you, you know, the last site, we just took out a commercial and put industrial. It had rough access, bad access. Well, the auto auction site is adjacent to the city owned part, well, maybe there's a couple of little parcels. But if you want to do something unique or special next to the freeway and take advantage of access, that's the area to consider it. And right now, we just have it all zoned industrial, so, just FYI, we don't.
Which area?
Yeah, auto, auto auction. I'm not saying it's going anywhere tomorrow, but it's a big site, and someday they, they probably won't be there, because this, everything's going online and pay a lot of real estate taxes, zone dirt.
Still gotta have a repo man to put plate stuff somewhere.
Yeah, you can put them a lot further away, a lot cheaper taxes than, than here.
And then it's what we figured at some point, was the taxes, they would, they would just, the, the land would become too valuable.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's the only concept, I know we're talking about a commercial and we took one out, but there's opportunity there in the long term.
We got direction, I think.
All right.
We'll reconvene if we don't.
All right.
Should be good. Yeah, I don't have anything else to, anything else, Scott?
We got forty-nine minutes left, we can't find something else.
Come on in.
No, we don't.
Forty-nine?
Your meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Close up. Man?
Your meeting, Mr. Mayor, the clothes are up.
We have anything else to discuss, discuss?
What I'm asking.
I'm your chair. Boom.